The council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight for the blessings of life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, and for sustenance and friendship. Bless us with your guidance as we perform the duties of managing our city. Bless our nation and allow our nation continue to be the hope of the world. Continue to look after the people of the Ukraine as they fight for their freedom. Give comfort to all that have lost ones and are suffering from their wounds. Again, bless our nation. Bring our people together as we face difficult problems. We ask all of this in your holy name, and let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of September the 21st, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 now therefore be it resolved. The City Council, the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council, the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion is in order with the pleasure of council. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve, Mayor.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Do I have a second? Councilman Goldberg.
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Will now move to approval of the minutes from the March 16th, 2022 work session and regular session, and a motion would be in order. Council, Councilman Johnson.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, Councilman Johnson. Vice Mayor Bennett.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no special presentations this evening. We're now, at this time, we will consider the removal of the item from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Since there's only one item on the consent agenda, removal of that item is not necessary, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett.
Move to approve.
And a motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett, do I have a second? Vice Mayor Bennett.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved. The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
No, Mayor Doeman. We do not have any agenda speakers this evening.
We will now move to presentation of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, please present the item for consideration.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the filing of a federal aviation administration grant application and authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement for airport improvement project, program project 3-51-0050-032-2022.
Mr. Deputy City Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this resolution would formalize the city's ability to accept $2,530,800 from the FAA to rehabilitate the apron adjacent to the terminal building at the Suffolk Executive Airport. This funding and project have been previously appropriated in previous capital improvement program plans by the City Council.
If there are no questions about the item, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Johnson.
Move for approval.
Councilman Fawcett.
Second as motion.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we will now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of real property in fee simple and/or permanent and/or temporary easements either by agreement or condemnation for the Freeman Mill Road Bridge Replacement Project. Mr. Deputy City Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Robert Lewis, the Director of Public Works, will provide an overview.
Good evening, members of the council. This is another good news story. As we have been in front of you for a number of times in recent years, this is another one of our old bridges that we inherited from VDOT that is one of the ones that has weight restrictions on, is deteriorating, and the state has been very gracious, and we've been very fortunate to receive funding on. So this is on Freeman Mill Road. Again, the primary purpose of this is to take this old wood timber bridge that is many years old and deteriorating, and I believe it's got an eight-ton limit on it at this point, and replace it. So the existing bridge is about 31 feet long. The new bridge going back is going to go to 42 feet, and we're actually going to raise the grade on it slightly, which should help in passing stormwater, raise the road up, and again minimize flooding in that area. The proposed timeline at this point, with your concurrence this evening and approval, we would start right away acquisition in December this year. At this point, we're saying February of '23. So you'll notice a pretty short period of time. We don't always have this shorter period of time. And if I remember correctly on this bridge, there's really no right of way to obtain on this. This is all easements in order to allow us to construct and finalize this bridge. With the acquisition completed, we would advertise it in September of next year and start the construction in the fall. At this point, we're envisioning about a year timeframe. Again, this is one of these situations where we're going to take an existing bridge, completely demolish it, pull all the abutments out and everything, start back from scratch, and build forward to a brand-new bridge. So the preliminary engineering, we spent about $137,000 on that to do the design. Again, you see right-of-way costs are only $15,000. That's for these easements. And it's a little over a million dollars in construction costs, bringing the total to about $1.2 million, slightly less, that again is proposed for this. As you're aware, this is in the southern part of the city, down off of Route 13, off of Freeman Mill Road. Here's a little closer, so there's a Freeman Mill Creek comes through there. As you can see, this is an old bridge. It does have some metal railings on it, but that's one of the few things that's metal on this bridge. Most all of it elsewise is timber. And again, following the public hearing, I'm available to answer any questions you may have, but we ask for approval to move forward right away this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing with the first speaker. Please come forward and provide their name and address. Do we have anyone to come forward to speak? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. I'm sorry, we got a straggler. There we go. And this is in regards to the Freeman Bill, Freeman Mill Road Bridge Replacement Project.
Good afternoon, each and every last one of you. I am the infineous Miss Rody Young Live for Norfolk, Virginia, and I'm from 600 Church Street, Box 1444, 23510, and I approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any other speakers? Any other speakers out there? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson.
Move for approval.
And a motion for approval, Councilman Johnson. Councilman Ward.
Second.
Second from Councilman Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk to change the zoning from RR Rural Residential Zoning District to RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District for property located at zoning map 12, Parcels 24 and 24G, account numbers 303979000 and 305036000. This is RZN 2021-2, conditional, and this item was continued from the July 20th, 22nd City Council meeting. Mr. Deputy City Manager, please provide an overview of the item.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine, the interim director of planning and community development, will provide the overview.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As stated, this is a conditional rezoning request to rezone 64.56 acres of property located at the end of Bob White Lane from RR, which is our Rural Residential Zoning District, to RLM. That's our Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District for the purpose of constructing 88 single-family detached units. The subject property is located within the suburban use district as designated by the 2035 plan in the northern growth area. The subject property consists of two separate parcels, tax map 12*24 and 12*24G, which are combined, as previously stated, for a combined size of 64.56 acres. The properties are located at the end of Bob White Lane and to the west of the Quaker Neck subdivision. The majority of the approximately 65 acres is comprised of fields and forested land cover. There's also a barn and several accessory structures. Staff is aware of a graveyard on the property, and any impact to that graveyard, it's important to note, will require approval from the Department of Historic Resources in Richmond. To the north of the property is the RR zoning district, and that's where the River Club residential subdivision is being developed. To the south, there's the Bennetts Creek and Brittany Farms neighborhood. Bennetts Creek, excuse me, and the Brittany Farms neighborhood, those are zoned RL, Residential Low Density. To the east, you have Quaker Neck, that's zoned RR as well, and to the west, you have three parcels that are zoned RR, Rural Residential, and Bennetts Creek. Here you have a rezoning exhibit of the properties. The applicant proposes to conditionally rezone this acreage along Bob White Lane from RR to RLM, as noted, for the purpose of constructing 88 single-family detached units. Under the current RR zoning, the site could yield potentially 45 units by right when you take into account the critical, the environmentally sensitive areas on the property as the RR district allows one unit per acre. The proposed RLM would allow 2.9 units per acre, however, the applicant is proffering a max number of units, which drops that. So the site is located in the suburban use district within the northern growth area where suburban-style neighborhoods are appropriate. The proffered number of 88 single-family dwellings would result in a growth density of approximately 1.3, 1.36 units per acre, which falls well within that recommended density range at the bottom for the suburban use district of one to five units per acre. This also, like I said, falls well below the RLM zoning district, which allows for 2.9 units per acre. So staff's evaluated this request against the policies contained within the 2035 comprehensive plan, and policies of note include Policy 2.1, keeping development focused in designated growth areas of the city; 2.2, assuring that development occurs in a predictable and orderly manner; Policy 2.4, promoting compatibility in land use patterns; and Policy 6.1, encouraging the development of a balanced and diverse housing stock. So this is a conditional rezoning. As such, the applicant has provided proffers, of which I do, in your packet, there was an inadvertent inclusion of the word detached after 88 single-family units. I am in possession of a revised proffer that acknowledges that it should be detached, not attached. So that has been corrected. But in advance of the meeting this evening, the applicant did revise the nature of their request. As you recall, this was previously on the agenda in July. At the request of the applicant, it was removed from the, our council voted to remove it from the agenda that evening, and as a result, the applicant has provided revised proffers. The most significant being the reduction of the units. Back in July, the applicant was requesting to construct up to 131 single-family detached units, and that has since been reduced to 88 single-family detached units, which once again results in a density of about 1.36 units per acre. Additionally, as proffered by the applicant, is the advancement of school capacity at the high school level, a limit of 88 single-family detached units. The minimum living space of these units will be a minimum of 1,500 square feet. Additionally, some design standards relating to the minimum architectural and design treatments of the homes. And lastly, as outlined in the accepted traffic impact assessment, improvements that are to intersections that are impacted by this development. Lastly, the, I mean, staff has reviewed this, and the proposed rezoning on these parcels from RR to RLM, and we believe it's consistent with the policies in the 2035 comprehensive plan, particularly the proposed density does align with existing land use patterns and complies with the comp plan and the UDO. As such, we recommend approval with the proffers as submitted. Lastly, the planning commission, at their meeting of June 21st, 2022, voted four to three to approve a resolution recommending approval of this with the proffers. That being said, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to address any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? And this is to speak in favor, in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Greer Ferguson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, and I would like to speak this evening. My address is 332 West Constance Road here in Suffolk. Yes, what we are proposing to do, I know we continued this from last time, and we had some pushback from the neighbors, our neighbors at Quaker Neck who've been there for 20 years. So we revised our plan, and we feel that we've come up with a plan that could please, hopefully could please everyone. We softened it from 131 to 88, which is a significant reduction in the amount of units, and we think that what we are planning to do is consistent with what the long-range planning for this area of town provides. We are in the northern growth area, suburban district, and a district like this would basically look for one to five units per acre is generally what you're looking for in an area like this. With the plan that we have now submitted, we will be at 1.36 units per acre, which we feel is, is consistent with everything around us. The new subdivision going in River Club, when you average it out, is about at the same density as we will be. That's a much larger subdivision than we are. In addition, as, as was brought to your attention, Quaker Neck, our next-door neighbor, is older. It's been there for 20 years. So they're more, that's an RR, and they're on more on like one acre lots there, but you're just not seeing that going into this part of town anymore, and it's not a part of what the long-term planning really is looking for. It's looking for the type of density we propose to put in. We've got, if you go through the facilities report from, from the staff, we pretty much fit into all the boxes with the water's adequate, the sewer's adequate, transportation is adequate. There have been some concerns about traffic on Shoulders Hill Road, which is understandable. In order to assist with that, we have proffered a left-hand turn lane coming off of Shoulders Hill, coming off of Pewsville Road onto Shoulders Hill Road to facilitate traffic in that area during traffic hours. In addition, we have agreed to make improvements to Bob White Lane as set forth in the proffer to widen and to make traffic a little, flow a little easier on Bob White Lane. We've also, in regards to proffers and facilities of schools, we don't create any issue for elementary or middle schools, the adequate, there's adequate space in those schools. High schools, it is estimated, we will create maybe six new students, so we will have, we will pay for those at the rate of $2,023 per lot, which will be about $178,000, which we will pay towards the school improvements down the road. That obviously is paid at the time of the occupancy permits per unit. We feel like what we're doing, it fits into the scheme of this side of, of that area of town off of Shoulders Hill Road. It is consistent, if you look at the maps of Shoulders Hill Road, there are little subdivisions all over the place off of Shoulders Hill. There's detached, there's attached, and overall, our project will fit right in. We have done everything we can to accommodate our neighbors. I know you had a report from one, our next-door neighbor who lives at the end of Bob White Lane, Mr. Potts and the Winslow family, and immediately upon getting that letter, Mr. Arnett went and spoke to the family and spoke to Mr. Potts, and they have since sent a letter saying they did not any longer object to our project. Did you all receive that letter? I heard there was an issue with that. Can I get, you did receive the letter? Okay, thank you very much. So we've resolved all issues with our neighbors. Just so you understand, this, that the land that we have purchased is a part of the same property that Mr. Potts and the Winslow family have. It was originally one farm, and then it ended up being inherited by three, three daughters, and so we, we ended up purchasing the property from two of the daughters, leaving one of the daughters still out there living on the old family farm. That's fundamentally the setup. We intend, just as, as part of our agreement with the Winslow Potts, to take the old original house, which was the house that Mr. Bob White lived in, and we are going to restore it and make it, that will be our community house for the neighborhood. So we will restore the old house, and it'll give a little character to that end of Bob White Lane. Think it'll be a nice little touch for everyone. I feel like we're going to put in very nice homes. The, the average price we estimate on these homes with a minimum square footage of 1,500 on our one stories, well, it's going to probably run anywhere from the mid-to-high fours all the way up to the mid-sixes. Housing's expensive now, but that is, that's what are these houses, which are not, these will be nice homes, not ultra fancy, but very nice homes that are going in at the end of Bob White Lane. We may do, and I think this is of interest, there will probably be some what we call age-targeted housing going in here, probably on the one-story, the 1,500s. They would be the kind of houses that somebody like me might want, where I don't have to buy it, they don't have to put any in, but if I'm looking, they'll do it, and they'll fix that, that smaller house up and make it very nice for someone who wants the bedroom on the first floor and everything on one floor. So it'll be a nice community if five or six or 25 people, like some of you and me, decide we want a smaller house in a nice neighborhood, we could go in there and get ourselves a nice age-targeted house, if, if, you know, the market is there. So we feel like we've tried to answer the questions of our neighbors, we're improving the road structure, we fit into the, the long-term planning boxes that the city is looking for in this area, and we feel that this project is a good project. We've worked hard to make it the best project we can, and we would appreciate your support on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Thelonious McLeanborough. I live at 205 Ashby Court here in Suffolk, and I am the president of the Quaker Neck Homeowners Association. We are in support of the compromised density that you heard going down from 131 to 88 homes. We, as a community, appreciate having the ability to not only be heard, but to, to be recognized that we had an issue, and the processes here within the city allow them to be heard and to be addressed, as you just heard. One remaining thing that we would ask on the record from our community, in the current proffer, there is a plan to improve at a right, a right or left turn on Pewsville. However, we are also aware that the entrance to Bob White Lane, that property will be gifted over to the city. So if we had a vote in the proffer, we would rather have the improvement along Bob White Lane. As you know or might not know, Suffolk driver path goes along that entrance, and in discussion with both Bob Arnett and Robert Lewis from the city, once that happened, the road could be widened there and parking placed in that area to facilitate entrance to that portion of Bob White Lane. So if that were to happen, we would still be in support and come back to the city and support the developer to do that. But once again, thanks for the opportunity to be a part of this. We support the current proffer.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good afternoon, City Council, also Mayor of Suffolk, Virginia. I am Rody Young Live, 600 Church Street, Box 1444, Norfolk, Virginia, 23510. And I speak on behalf of the 757. We are so very pleased that you guys are considering bringing some new housing into Suffolk, Virginia. So we would like to tell you we approve of this message because a lot of Suffolk, Virginia houses are ran down, and it's time for upgrade. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in favor. We've got about a minute and a half. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this ordinance? If there are no other speakers to speak in favor, do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition? We have 15 minutes for opposition speakers.
My name is Evelyn Jones. I live in Glen Forest subdivision, which is the smallest of the subdivisions along Bob White. My address is 4921 Fennelane, 23435. I'm here to speak in opposition of the rezoning, not so much the subdivision, but the rezoning. There are 300 people that agree with me and have sent in a petition saying that we do not need to rezone properties along Bob White Lane. I don't know how many of you here have been down Bob White Lane and seen how beautiful it is, with the exception of River Club. It is not going to be as pretty as people would like you to think. Those houses are only 15 feet apart. But I do have a few things here that I would like to address. Traffic, traffic is atrocious. I, I got hold of the IT, which is a manual that is used for planning roadways using certain numbers. Well, the numbers for residential are 10 trips per residential unit. I went out with a friend, one of my neighbors, and we counted every single house on Bob White Lane. I know how many there are. The total number is 601 at this time. That's including the 377 for River Club. The number that is in that book is 10. That's per day, 10 trips per day per resident. That turns out to be 6,010. Bob White Lane is being enlarged to all of three lanes, from two to three. It's going to be a real nightmare. Where I live, Glen Forest, we're kind of in the middle, and already with the new subdivisions that are in there, the traffic on Bob White Lane is getting to be a little bit on the hairy side. Give it two more years, I won't be able to get out of my neighborhood because there'll be so many cars coming down Bob White Lane. Then to speak of Shoulders Hill, Pewsville, Bridge Road, Nansman Parkway, they are all right now well over capacity. I think that council needs to look at their opinions of putting more rooftops in that area until the roads are brought up to a standard that they can handle this. We've got stuff all over the place up there. It's terrible, and I think that you need to look at that before you approve increase in zonings. I also wish to announce or make a statement for the people down at the very end, the Winslos and Potts. I did not see in the proffers that there's going to be any kind of landscape buffer between their property and this new subdivision. When Riverbin came in, Glen Forest spoke against not having a buffer there. We would have been just thrown to the wind because we're RR, and we love our large lots. We all don't have super big houses, but we like the lots, and so do our neighbors, and so do the kids. People talk about millenniums. We just recently got two. We just recently got two millennium families in there. They think it's wonderful. They like the houses. They like the yards. The kids play, and they don't worry about them getting run over by cars because we're only two streets, and we're cul-de-sac at both of them. But I think that that would be only proper, that you put a, you require the developer to put up a landscape buffer of 50 feet, which is what Riverbin, River Club has done between Glen Forest and themselves. It wasn't mentioned, but the Winslos have horses. They have one right now, and they're planning to get a couple more. So there's gonna be horses down there. So just, just to let you know that that's something that needs to be addressed, that I did not see being addressed. Also, there was talk about how the, the Seaboard Coast, Coastline Trail. Well, you can just walk down from this area. No, it's a mile and a third to go from this new subdivision to the entrance of this trail because there's subdivisions along, there's two subdivisions along there, and I'm sure those people don't want you walking through their yard to go to this trail. I mean, it's a half mile for me to walk to the end of it, to get, to do it. So anyway, these are the things that I have a problem with. Letting things always be rezoned, for what? It's my understanding that the by rights with the special benefits, the RR zoning would only allow the developer to put four more houses. Is it worth the four houses to have it a massive, I don't know. I don't like these subdivisions where people are crammed on top of each other. That's why I live in Glen Forest. So please think real hard before you say yes to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone inside or outside who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Seeing none, Mr. Ferguson, you have a five-minute rebuttal period?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I appreciate the comments that she's made. First, to address the traffic issue, you know, and I've discussed this with you before, I think anytime you've lived in what is tantamount to a pretty darn rural area, and you watch the area transition, it becomes subjectively to you, the traffic is heavy. But a traffic engineer wouldn't see it that way by 2022 standards. And so it, it's difficult sometimes when we, and I, I've noticed it even in my little part living in downtown Suffolk, the traffic. But that's just a part of, of growth and a part of what we as a society have learned to accept. There's a reason that the long-term planning has kind of put this type of request in here, actually, that we should be at the density that we are proposing. We are gonna be lower than what the long-range plan actually has as a median. The long-range plan is 1-5, we're at 136. We're not jamming it in there. We're not jamming it in there. And that, that is, we did that to help appease our neighbors, and we do appreciate their support here this evening. In regards to buffers, we do have buffers. We, it's all a part of the plan required by the city. There will be buffers, substantial buffers. I don't know if the public is aware, but the buffers will be there. The city has required it as a part of, of what we are doing. And we can't get the plan approved without the, without the landscape, and that has all been discussed with our neighbors that are next door as well, that the buffers will be there. So we will have the buffers. The, the, the traffic engineers included our, our subdivision, they included River Club, and all of these projections were done by the traffic engineers. All of this, what will be there in three to five years was factored in, in saying the roads would be adequate to handle this, handle what the development is. We've made proffers to improve the road system, which we think will help. In addition, we have to keep in mind that we will not get our first house built probably till 2025. And by then, a lot of the improvements at, at Shoulders Hill and Route 17 will have been completed, and that's gonna create, it's gonna solve a big bottleneck they've got up at that intersection. All that will be, will be much better off. So the road system is going to improve over time, and I believe that the development we have should, should be, be approved. But I do understand concerns of people who have lived in an area a long time. This isn't the first time that you're gonna hear this, and it's not gonna be the last. We all have to deal with it and be, and show our concern, but be honest about the future of the people who own land and are trying to create development for a growing city. Thank you.
Thank you. We still have two minutes and 12 seconds if anyone else would like to speak during the rebuttal period. Do we have anyone else to speak in rebuttal? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd just like to take a moment to thank the developer for spending some time with the homeowners in the area over there, to work with them, to work out some of the issues, because we do see where they reduced them down from 131 to, to 88, which is a significant reduction. You know, I, I travel that roadway out there every day. I heard some concerns about traffic on, on Bob White, and I had taken the opportunity to take different times of the day, different times of the week, to go out there and just kind of sit off to the side and kind of look and see what the traffic negotiations were looking like out there. I, I didn't find enough traffic out there to really get my concern. It just wasn't there. So, you know, with everything that, that the developers have done, the HOA has done, the many improvements that are going out into that property, it's gonna be a very beautiful place to live out there once it's completed. And I would only say at this time, Mayor, I would move for approval.
Can we get a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett? Councilman Williams?
Yes, ma'am. I'll second that motion.
Got a second from Councilman Williams. Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make some comments about this project. I do appreciate HMO for y'all working with Mr. Arnett with this. There have been quite a few meetings, which I attended, quite a few in the neighborhood to talk to you, listen to your concerns. And it was a far-part conversation when it first started. But I think being persistent, as you were, you worked together, and I think that he came about trying to meet some of y'all's concerns. I did have, Mr. Ferguson, one question for you. Mr. Winslow in the back, how his easement for him getting, the family, two families in the back could be getting back to their properties?
There are two, two, two little answers to that. Number one, we've come to a verbal agreement with them on the easement movement. And the second answer is, is if we are unable to come to that agreement, which we have come to verbally, if for some reason it falls apart. Our traffic engineer has assured us that we can get to do our subdivision without affecting the easement, and we would, we can do it unaffected the easement. So we don't have to move the easement to move forward. But we are hoping that our verbal agreement will come to fruition.
Okay, because I know now, his driveway goes just about through the center of that, and then the horses is over to the right as you're going in, and he's moving the horse now back into the back. So I was just concerned to make sure that he was not landlocked.
We, we can make the traffic flow work without their cooperation if it were to come to that, but we don't think that's going to happen. So we do have Plan B, which will work. We would prefer Plan A, which is agreement, but we don't have to have it to make the subdivision work.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, I've just got a few comments, and then we'll, we'll call for the vote. I'm also familiar with this, having spoken to the HOA president on several occasions and visiting Bob White. And I remember watching the very first Planning Commission meeting, and Theo, forgive me for not using your last name because it's a big, long name. I just call you Theo, not a, you know, not disrespectful. But I remember Theo being up there, and he says, you know, "We can live with an RL designation as far as density," and this was RLM. And what's been agreed to by the applicant is not necessarily the zoning is remaining RLM, but the proffer has limited the number of homes to well within RL guidelines, which is less than one and a half per acre. So I want to thank the applicant for getting together with the HOA and coming to a, an agreement that both parties could live with. So with that being said, we have a motion from Councilman Fawcett for approval, a second from Councilman Williams. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote.
Excuse me, Mayor. Was there, the staff report included a reference to typos. Does the motion need to reflect that amendment as well?
With the typo?
I believe Mr. Wine mentioned...
With, with the corrections.
Okay. I just need the...
With the proffer statement?
Yeah.
With the amended proffer statement.
So Councilmember Fawcett and Councilmember Williams consent to that?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
So we're gonna amend the motion to approve with the proffer adjustments, if you will, proffer modifications. Okay, now prepare to vote. Council members, please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Butler Barlow voting in opposition.
Okay, our next public hearing is in order to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare, family day home, from five to 12 children, and property located at 6205 Old Town Point Road. Zoning map 6A4, parcel four, account number 303833000. This is CUP 202216. Mr. Deputy City Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine, the interim director of planning community development, will provide the overview.
Thank you again, Deputy Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, this is a request to establish a daycare, also known as a family day home, for the keeping of up to 12 children, more than five, up to 12, at 6205 Old Town Point Road. This property is located within the Northern Growth Area and is designated mixed-use core use district in the 2035 comprehensive plan. The subject property and all surrounding properties are zoned RC, that's our residential compact zoning district, with some RM, that's our residential medium zoning district to the south. The applicant is requesting to establish a daycare, family day home for five to 12 children. Currently, they do keep up to four children. That is a permitted use by right throughout the city, but they are looking to increase that capacity to five to 12. In their single-family home, they would utilize 1,446 square feet of the first floor of their home, which includes the kitchen, living room, dining room, one full bathroom, guest bedroom, and a finished double garage and fenced-in backyard. Currently, as stated, the applicant operates a daycare with up to four children, and that's permitted by right throughout the city and in the RC zoning district. The applicant is proposing to triple the enrollment for Dee's Little Din daycare as the issuance, with the issuance of the use permit, would allow for care up to 12 children, ranging in ages from six weeks to 12 years old. The applicant has stated that they will be utilizing the finished double car garage for the business, the kitchen for all meals and snacks, the one full bathroom throughout the day and night, and then one guest bedroom for overnight stays. The expanded use is subject to the city supplemental use regulations. That's contained in section 31701 of the, 18 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The existing operation is licensed through the Virginia Department of Social Services and allows for the 24-hour operation. The expanded family daycare home use will be permitted to operate from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM daily, when more than four children are being kept. However, should this use permit be approved, nothing shall prevent the keeping of no more than four children overnight, as specified in the staff recommended conditions. The applicant has provided pictures of an enclosed backyard that will be utilized for outdoor play, that meets our minimum requirements as outlined in our supplemental use standards. Additionally, the applicant will be providing four off-street parking spaces, with only three spaces being required, meeting, meeting that minimum requirement. Thus, parking is adequate for this use. And additionally, the public interest in welfare should not be negatively impacted by the establishment of this daycare, as daycare facilities provide essential services to families. Staff has evaluated the application for compliance with the Unified Development Ordinance and has determined it demonstrates that it can meet the criteria established for uses requiring a conditional use permit. The staff recommends approval with the conditions outlined in your report. The Planning Commission, at their meeting on August 16th, voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with conditions. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Ward?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Ward. Councilman Fawcett?
Second his motion, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in order to grant a variance to the street improvement standards of section 31-612 of the Unified Development Ordinance, in order to grant relief from the connectivity and maximum cul-de-sac length standards for the RU district, on property located at 611 and 711 Factory Street. Zoning map 35H, Prophecy 3, Parcels X14, X-Astrid 14A, and X17, account number 050872000, 050871000, and 053408100. This is SVV 20222. Mr. Deputy City Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine, interim director of planning community development, will provide the update on this variance request.
Thank you, Deputy Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, as stated, this is a subdivision variance request for property located along Factory Street, south of the downtown core, which is part of the core support use district. And you, you may be familiar, going back several months ago, we, we had a pretty in-depth conversation about connectivity and cul-de-sac length back at work session in April. So, so these should be somewhat familiar to you. But this property has quite a history with us, as I'm sure they look familiar to you. But they were rezoned back in February of 2020. This was rezoning request, RZN 2019012. To change the former M2 heavy industrial zoning to a combination of B2 general commercial at its frontage and RU residential urban zoning along the rear, which is the zoning that you see here. The rezoning included two proffers. The first, that no more than 23 single-family detached units could be constructed on the parcels in the rear. There were also some design criteria for the homes. Each home would be constructed on a crawl space or 18-inch slab and contain a minimum of 1,600 square feet, minimum, and 25-year architectural shingles. The second proffer stipulated that no more than 17,000 square feet of commercial space would be constructed on the front parcel. So over the last two years, the developer has worked pretty diligently on designing the layout of this development, and those efforts led to the realization that subdivision variance was likely needed to achieve those goals. In particular, the variance requests relief from two standards, as noted, the connectivity ratio and the maximum cul-de-sac length standards for the RU district. This is the conceptual layout provided by the applicant that chose one road in, two cul-de-sacs, and this would serve proposed 20 single-family lots. So here, you can kind of visualize what this variance relates to. Section 31612F, connectivity and secondary access establishes a minimum connectivity ratio of 1.4 for subdivisions in order to support an interconnected street system to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. The applicant is requesting a connectivity ratio of one, because the connect- ratio of one, because the connectivity ratio is determined by dividing links by nodes, and you need to be at a ratio of 1.4 or higher. In this case, you have three nodes to three links, and that results in a connectivity ratio of one. Each of those links are identified in red here. The nodes are the intersection points or terminuses, the cul-de-sacs in this case. So the second issue here is the cul-de-sac length. In the RU zoning district, it's a denser zoning district. Being denser, we want to eliminate long stretches of road with only one way in, one way out. So with that being said, what they're proposing here on the limited frontage that they have is a cul-de-sac length of approximately 600 feet, so it's a double R standard. So the intent of the street improvement standards is to ensure that streets will function in an interdependent manner and to provide adequate access for primarily emergency vehicles and city service vehicles and to enhance the non-vehicular traffic, such as for pedestrians and bicycle movements. They're also intended to provide continuous and comprehensive traffic routes. In cases of unusual circumstances, when strict adherence to the general regulations would result in practical difficulties or hardship, city council, upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission, may authorize exceptions to the subdivision regulations as authorized in section 31515 of the Unified Development Ordinance. So staff has analyzed the criteria for granting the variances outlined in. We concur with the applicant that a variance is warranted. The four criteria that are pertinent here is the granted of the variance, exception or waiver of conditions will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to other property. The second criteria states that the conditions upon the request is based, is based, are unique to the property. Three, that because of a particular physical surrounding shape, topographical conditions of the specific property involved a particular hardship to the owner would result, as distinguished from a mere inconvenience. And lastly, the relief sought will not in any manner vary the provisions of the zoning ordinance, Article 4, Comprehensive Plan or official map, except that those documents may be amended in a manner prescribed by law. So staff's analyzed the request in relation to the established criteria. It's concluded that the requests meet these requirements, and the staff is recommending approval with the conditions noted in our provided report. The Planning Commission did consider this item at their August 16th meeting. By a vote of eight to zero, they are approving a resolution recommending approval of this application with those said conditions. That concludes my report on this item. I will be stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
Each, this is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address as to speak in favor of this ordinance? Do we have anyone present to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none, do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance is presented for council's consideration. Councilman Williams?
May I move to approve?
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Councilman Ward?
Second.
Second from Councilman Ward. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
I have a question.
Oh, gotcha. He didn't pop up there. Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you very much. Mr. Wine, can you come back up a minute? I want to talk about the length of the cul-de-sac. I thought we had some policies at 300 feet was the length of a cul-de-sac, and we're talking about 600 feet. You want to clear me up on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So this kind of illustrates what we're talking about, but cul-de-sacs are measured at, from the last point, that gives you two points of ingress egress to the site. This only has one point in. In the RU zoning district, as this property is zoned, the maximum permitted cul-de-sac length is 300 feet. Due to the uniqueness of this property, the limits that they have on a frontage on Factory Street, it's kind of forced their hand from locating a street. Additionally, it's kind of landlocked on the other pieces, so they can't do an interconnected system, which would eliminate the need for a cul-de-sac. So based upon the design that they've come up with, it would result in a cul-de-sac that's about 600 feet in length.
How would that affect other projects that have come up before us in the past that had asked for a variance of maybe 600 feet or 450 feet that we've had, and on this one, we're giving it 600 feet? What's the difference?
Well, every request for a variance is looked at in, as it relates to that criteria that I discussed during my presentation. And they have to demonstrate that there's a real hardship. In this case, staff reviewed the application and came to the conclusion that, yeah, they have a pretty good case due to the restraints on the property. One of the key components there is if another way, an alternative design, can be demonstrated that works on a property, obviously, they can't meet that criteria as cleanly. But with that being said, cul-de-sac length previously, up until now, this will be the first case brought before you all in recent memory that asks for a variance, a cul-de-sac length. This is something that we recently changed through an ordinance text amendment, because that previously sat with the Director of Planning and Community Development.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilperson Butler Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, I just had a quick question relative to safety, because I think that's been an issue with the length of cul-de-sac. Is there any concern from fire rescue that this was going to cause a problem in this particular situation?
None has been shared. The Fire Department does sit on our Land Use Committee, which is an internal staff committee, and no concerns were shared with this particular case.
Thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments? I just have one comment. I'm familiar with that piece of property. It is a unique piece of property downtown that, you know, an individual is willing to invest their money and develop in, and the request for the variance is not so much a want as it is a need because of the characteristics of the property. So I fully support this request as well. If there's no other comments, we have a motion for approval from Councilman Williams and a second from Councilman Ward. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to amend chapter 31 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Code of the City of Suffolk, Article 4, zoning, section 31406, use regulations, table 406-1, principal uses permitted in zoning district, and Article 6, design and improvement standards, section 31-602, design standards. This is 0TA 202204. Mr. Deputy City Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, in 2018, the city council adopted a downtown master plan, which featured a number of recommendations and projects. Some of these recommendations included code suggestions and zoning modifications. Mr. Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide you with an overview on one of these recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, again, Members of Council. This is an ordinance text amendment I think we can get pretty excited about. This, I was before you, I believe in early June, talking about affordable housing, and one of the mechanisms that, and the Comprehensive Plan speaks in depth about affordable housing and it being a priority to diversify the housing stock throughout the city, because that's an underrepresented. This is, will not directly increase affordable housing per se, but is certainly a component of that. And right now, within our central business district, which is downtown, where this building is, and generally the area around it, up and down North Main and west and east Washington, to construct multifamily developments, it requires a conditional use permit. I think most recently, you all considered one of those applications for the Old Suffolk News Herald building that they converted to multifamily. In our opinion, and discussions and research of the issue, that didn't make sense for a central business district. That is supposed to be a collection of variety of uses to include residential and commercial, among other things. So with that being said, this makes a lot of sense, in our opinion. So the first part of this ordinance would do that. It would allow by right the construction of multifamily units in the downtown area. The second part of this would just allow some flexibility to utilize off-site public parks in lieu of providing onsite space amenities for these uses. And there's some reasoning behind that. Generally, in your downtown area, you have very small lots. The buildings that are constructed on those lots kind of take up the entire site, meaning it's pretty difficult to find open space on a lot where there's no open space. So with that being said, we acknowledge that the downtown's unique, and the city's making some investments with the Festival Events Park, new library, things of that nature. And the opportunities for open space are pretty abundant in the downtown area. So that's the second part of this ordinance. It would allow, at the discretion of the Director of Planning and Community Development, at the time of site plan, they could work, and we could determine whether there's a case to be made for not providing onsite open space. That would certainly be an exception to the intent. I think the intent would still be to provide some onsite open space, but we realize that there are some unique cases. So here's the proposed amendment in table form. You can see we're changing that C for dwelling multifamily and apartments not otherwise enumerated in the CBD zoning district to a P, meaning that it would be permitted by, as a matter of right. And the second part of this is some language that we're adding to our development criteria standards, our performance standards as they are contained in Article 6 of the Unified Development Ordinance, stating that private open space requirements for multifamily dwelling units in the CBD zoning district may be waived by the director with documented proof that adequate amenities such as parks, sidewalks, trails, or bikeways are located within 1,000 square feet of the development. And that's important, and I failed to note that right now, multifamily units throughout the city, whether it's CBD or RU, north, central, what have you, they require, they're required to provide, excuse me, 200 square feet per unit, and of common area. This could be an inside gym, this could be a little pocket park, but that's a requirement that they have to demonstrate at the time of site plan. So this would allow some potential flexibility. There would have to be a good reason, but would allow some potential flexibility. Just to illustrate what this looks like, here we have a map from our downtown plan that shows opportunities for open space that exists currently in the downtown. All are pretty walkable. In the purple, you have our central business district. You have a variety of open space that's certainly easily walkable from there. So with that being said, staff fully supports this amendment, and the Planning Commission, at their meeting of August 16th, 2022, voted eight to zero to approve a resolution recommending its approval of the ordinance text amendment. That concludes my presentation. We'll be happy to address any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay, thank you again, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, ladies and gentlemen, members of staff. Roger Leonard, 1525 Airport Road. I've had some exposure recently that points to why this is probably a pretty good idea. I think it's been a long time since we really sat down and took a look at the UDO. I was here when it was built 25, maybe even more years than that ago. I've worked with a lot of city councils, and there seems to be a disconnect between how they deal with the UDO and the various, I guess, tables, the various elements. And I think the UDO is getting a little worn. It's time maybe to hold some charrettes, reach out to the public, find out what's going on. As a body, it seems as though, from my records review, that you're making an awful lot of amendments and changes, which indicates the document's getting stale. I would recommend to you that this be approved, because this does make sense as a planner. I've been a senior planner many years, and I think what it points out is that you need to even dig deeper into the processes of the UDO. The other thing is you've had an upheaval in staff over the last year or 14 months, and this process is a good training mechanism to gear staff up, to expose them to the intricacies and so on. I think you have many bright stars. I think the exposure would be helpful, and I would recommend approval of this, along with even digging further. So, Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll leave you the comment.
Thank you, sir. We have our next speaker, please. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. Councilman Fawcett? I mean, I'm sorry, Councilman Johnson?
Mayor, I'd like to thank planning for coming up with this, because it's something that we've long needed in downtown area. Future development, we need affordable housing for people, and it'll also encourage us to develop the public parks, public walkways, public areas. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, we get a motion for approval from Councilman Johnson. Councilman Fawcett?
Second his motion.
Okay, we get a second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, our next ordinance is in ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk to change the zoning from B2, general commercial zoning district, and A, agricultural zoning district, to M2, heavy industrial zoning district, conditional, for property located at 2925 Prudential Boulevard, zoning map 25, a portion of parcels 57 and 57A, and parcels 57B, 57C, 57E, and zoning map 24, parcel 33, account numbers 252849000, 252847000, 252857000, 252845000, 253102300, 252430600. This is RZN 202120, conditional, and this item was continued from the August 17th, 2022 city council meeting. And before we provide an overview, I believe Councilman Goldberg has a statement.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hold on, let me get you turned on there. Where are you?
Thank you, Mayor.
Gotcha.
I may have a personal interest in this transaction identified as rezoning request, RZN 2021-020, due to the fact of my employment, and that the owners of the company for which I work may have a personal interest in real estate that is adjacent to the Williams property. As there is a group of three or more that will be affected in the same manner by this transaction, and because I am able to participate fairly, objectively, in public interest, I will participate. This transaction is provided in the Virginia Code, section 2.2-3112B1. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, we'll now move on to an overview of the item by our deputy city manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Mr. Kevin Wine, the interim Director of Planning and Community Development, is going to provide a recap and an overview of the project. Additionally, Robert Lewis, the Director of Public Works, is going to touch upon the history and city strategy regarding Route 460.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. I'll be far briefer than I was. I'll be far briefer than I was this time a month ago, but my goal tonight is just to offer a recap, where we have kind of been from 30 days ago to now, what has changed, what maybe hasn't changed, kind of recapping our analysis and the factors that relate to that analysis. Obviously, we do very deep dives on these land use cases. This is no different than any land use case we consider. So, as you recall, the property in question consists of six separate parcels, approximately 540 acres in area total. The 2035 comprehensive plan designates this property as being located within the central growth area, suburban use district. Presently, there is a 135-acre portion of the site that is Zone B2 already, while the balance of the site is Zone A Agricultural. So the applicant, as I shared with you last month, is requesting a change in zoning from B2, General Commercial District, and A Agricultural Zoning District, to M2, Heavy Industrial Zoning District, for an approximately 540-acre site bounded by Pruden Boulevard, that's US Route 460, Kings Fork Road, Pitch Kettle Road, Murphy's Mill Road, and US Route 58. As conceptualized but not proffered, the applicant proposes to develop approximately 10 warehouse buildings to be known as the Port 460 Logistics Center. The applicant proposes to develop approximately 5 million square feet of warehouse space in these 10 buildings, which would be constructed in phases. The industrial buildings will be served by an internal road network to include three and four-lane public roads connecting the various parcels. External access points to the site include a main entrance from Pruden Boulevard with additional access points from Pitch Kettle Road. The Pruden Boulevard frontage to the, frontage of the site is proposed to be developed for approximately 24,000 square feet of mixed service retail uses such as restaurants, gas stations, and convenience stores. Here we have an example of products that this particular developer has built in the past. This is from projects in Frederick, Maryland. So, since your last meeting, this is kind of when I get into a little bit of the changes here. The applicant has submitted a revised proffer statement. That was included in your packet. We do have a signed copy in our possession. The revised statement assures that many uses permitted by right or with a conditional use permit in the M2 district will not be permitted. Of note, uses that the proffer statement note that the developer, our successors and interests cannot establish include major automobile repair facilities, body shops, detention facilities, jails, kennels. They did add an additional nine uses, high-intensity uses, to that revised proffer statement. Additionally, traffic improvements, including improvements outlined in the approved traffic impact assessment, include $4.5 million towards the 30% engineering plans for Route 460 between Route, the Route 58 bypass and Providence Road and Lake Prince Drive, including $400,000 for survey work along this corridor, and $2.1 million for interchange improvements at the Route 460 and Route 58 bypass. We discussed this last month, but you're, the are proffering enhanced landscape buffer, which would be along the shared property line with Nansman Suffolk Academy, and also along Murphy's Mill Road right-of-way. This includes a 75-foot buffer, landscape screening, fencing, and birmingham along the boundary with, in these areas, as illustrated in this exhibit. The exhibit highlights the areas where there would be an enhanced landscape buffer. You can see the Nansman Suffolk shared property line to the north and to the south, the frontage along Murphy's Mill Road. So just to recap some of the highlights from the comprehensive plan that we, it's our job to evaluate, and this particular application notes a couple, speaks to a couple, but one, keeping jobs and schools near population centers. Two, balanced growth and development and balancing the distribution of future jobs in relation to existing and future infrastructure facilities and services. Keeping development focused in the designated growth areas of the city as this property's located. Promote a balance of residential and non-residential land uses. We touched on the applicable place types last month, which in the suburban use district include traditional neighborhood centers, traditional neighborhoods, suburban centers, suburban neighborhoods, corridor, and special districts. Specifically, this proposal aligns with the description of special districts as envisioned in the comprehensive plan. As a reminder, those districts exist for exceptional uses that cannot comfortably sit within a center or neighborhood. Some will require a clear separation from the general population for health and safety reasons, and/or require adjacency to rail and interstate transportation. Special districts are typically large-scale and single-use. Some special district uses such as heavy industrial do sit outside of and as an exception to needs and activities of the general population. So briefly, I'm going to go over the phasing as it relates to traffic, and then our expert Public Works Director, Robert Lewis, will step in. But in Phase 1, you can see the phasing map as included in their TIA on this next slide that I'll go to, that Robert can reference. But Phase 1 will include the modification of the westbound off-ramp of the 58 bypass to the westbound 460, to westbound 460, including a new traffic signal. It will include the closure of the median break on Route 460 at the Millermark Convenience Store to allow adequate distance between lane movements to the Northfield traffic signal. There will be an upgrade to the signal at Northfield and Route 460. The construction of a new road, this is Road A, and required turn lanes and laneage to support traffic in this area. Commercial traffic will use an internal roadway for access to new businesses. Phase 2, they will optimize the timing and operations of the traffic signal system. No access to Murphy's Mill Road will be allowed for traffic. Phase 3, improvements to Pitch Kettle Road to include widening and a multi-use path. The design will prohibit trucks from turning left onto Pitch Kettle Road towards Route 58. Improvements to Pitch Kettle and Kings Fork Road intersection will be made. Improvements at Kings Fork Road and Pruden Boulevard intersection would include extra laneage and traffic signal upgrades. Truck route signage and truck prohibition signage will be installed. Phase 4, Pitch Kettle Road and Road F will be constructed and will include turn lanes to support the traffic. At this time, I will pause and invite Robert Lewis to come up to talk more as it relates to traffic, which is obviously a real concern with an application of this magnitude. Robert?
Transportation has certainly been one of the most reviewed and most concerning issues on this entire project, because this is such a large, significant project, and will generate quite a bit of traffic. But I'd like to bring you just a few new facts and a little bit of update on this. So, why is this site so important? This is based off current data that we've gotten from the Department of Transportation and the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission. These are the top eight corridors in and out of Hampton Roads that are used for freight movement. And you'll see 64 is on top, right below that is 58 and 460. One interesting fact, if you'll take note, we've gotten to the point now there's more truck traffic coming down 58 and 460 than is actually leaving the Hampton Roads area via 64. This is becoming the rider preference. At this point, it's about a two-third, one-third split between 58 and 460 once you pass the Pruden Boulevard interchange, but again, that's going to continue on to grow. Again, just split by graphic to help you see that just a little bit better, how important these two corridors are to our region. One of the other very significant issues here that I had to bring attention to is we've also reached out and got the projections of traffic for the coming years. So over the next 24 years to 2045, the corridor is expected to grow significantly, and in fact, Route 58 is projected about a 47% increase in truck traffic over that time period. But what's really interesting is Route 460 is projected almost a 90% increase in truck traffic coming in and out of the Hampton Roads region. So let's go back and take just a little bit of history. About 10 years ago, I think it's two governors ago, actually, third governor if you count the one today, was looking at the Commonwealth, and the vision was out there at that time to capitalize upon the Port of Virginia. So just like, the ports, like everything else, it takes years to plan and implement. One of the things that current governor did was, again, he saw the need that if we improve the port, there's got to be a way to get the traffic, transportation network in and out. And he began a program whereby VDOT entered into what was then known as a public-private partnership with a group called 460 Mobility Partners, to start working on replacing a piece of 460. Quite a bit of work went in there, a lot of public hearings, a lot of money was invested. It was going to be a 55-mile-long road that essentially went from the Suffolk bypass and went all the way to 295, just outside of Petersburg, Virginia. It was going to be a high-speed, limited-access highway. It was going to be funded by tolls, and if you recall, the tolls were pretty significant. It was going to be $12 for trucks and $4 for passenger vehicles. At that time, VDOT was also assuming they were going to be able to get all the necessary environmental permits to build that 55-mile-long road. Again, 55 miles of road in one fell swoop is a pretty ambitious project. As time went on, the Corps of Engineers did not like what they were seeing as far as the amount of environmental impacts it were having, but the state at that time disagreed with them and said, "This is our number-one priority, transportation priority in the entire Commonwealth of Virginia at that point." A new governor took office, and as governors do, they have the opportunity to appoint new people. So a new Secretary of Transportation come on board, there were new members of the Transportation Board came on, and after, again, a lot of additional analysis, that board and that governor decided to suspend the work. And again, it was really around that impact to the environment, whether or not they were going to be able to get the permits necessary to fund that larger road as they move forward. One of the outcomes of that was, though, we've got something we now call Smart Scale. So the Commonwealth of Virginia, through the Transportation Board, says, "We've got to be a little bit smarter," hence the name, "and how we allocate and pick projects to spend our money on." And they created this whole program called Smart Scale, in which now every locality in the Commonwealth of Virginia has to compete for transportation funding. It used to be every locality had certain funds allocated to them every year that they could pick and choose what they wanted to. As transportation dollars became more and more scarce, it said, "It's got to be a better way to do that." One of the interesting things about Smart Scale is it looks to improve safety, reduce congestion, increase accessibility, contribute to economic development, promote efficient land use, and also try to protect the environment. What is really interesting, though, in Hampton Roads, is Hampton Roads, the top item that goes into the scaling of this, the traffic, is the congestion. 40% waiting in our region goes to congestion. So many of our roads, while, again, a lot of our citizens around here will tell you our roads are totally congested and it's terrible in the grand scheme of things, and as it calculates into this, we don't score real well in congestion, and we've been somewhat hampered, being a part of Hampton Roads and trying to secure funding through Smart Scale, because of the way it's scored. What's interesting, though, staff has been very proactive in the last number of years, and we have actively worked these programs, and as such, we've been fairly fortunate. We've obtained additional money out of Smart Scale to help finish the funding of the Wright 58 widening that's under construction now. We were just recently, this past spring, awarded money to widen Route 10, Adam Garland Boulevard, from the bypass going north to Kings Fork, to a six-lane road, and to build a new interchange there at 58. We were also awarded money to help on Route 17, so we're doing the Shoulders Hill project, but we've also got another project on 17. So while we have been somewhat hampered by the scaling program, we have learned how to, for lack of a better term, work the system and bring some funds back to us. One point that we have to keep in mind, though, is any time we are dealing with a very large-scale, expensive project, there is absolutely no way the City of Suffolk can fund that entire project on its own. We have to depend on multiple funding sources. Some of that's from the state of Virginia, some of that is from the federal government. There's many different funding programs, and we'll talk about a couple of those in a minute, but we cobble together funds from many sources. If you remember last month, I did a briefing on the 58 project, and there was quite a number of sources of funds that we cobbled together to make 58 possible and to move We haven't been sitting still, though. Well before this project came to the door and was started being discussed with staff, we, the staff, had already started identifying there are significant transportation needs in our city, and we started trying to work on those and get some of those in our capital improvement program, one of which is there was an issue out at the Pruden Center, safety. Our council has elected to fund that. I would like to have told you that would have already been under construction. However, in the economy today, we hit a little hiccup in there in the bidding environment. We've now rebid that and are getting ready to turn that loose, so construction should start on that very shortly. That is in this corridor, 460. So that's kind of the very first piece, even though it's a little bit further out of this overall corridor. But also in the CIP, we put together funds in there and a plan in there for 460 as a whole. Again, recognizing we really need to go from the bypass all the way to the city line. One of the lessons we learned is don't bite off more than you can chew. We started this out with a little bigger, smaller piece, and again, our vision in the CIP at this point was from the bypass out to somewhere around Kings Fork Road. We said, "We'll start that." There is money in the out-years of the CIP budget to begin that process. One of the things we have learned, as we work for funding mechanisms on this, is money attracts money. If you have a project that all you have is a vision and you have no dollars on it, it's almost impossible to find funding from any source. If, however, you have a project that already has funding on it, and especially if you can go advanced through that and have some of your preliminary engineering done and some other things done, it makes it much more attractive to attract funds. Back to this project, again, working with the developer and with the plans that we've got at this point, we originally, council, a month ago, asked, said, "What's this project going to cost?" And at that time, the best I could do was give you my best engineering guess. I told you $100 million. Again, it was a guess at that point. Since that time, we've had time to really get down in there, do some analysis, and really work some numbers. So again, we think we're somewhere around $8.4 million in design, and that design money will go from the bypass all the way to the western end of Suffolk, all the way to the Isle of Wight County line, and it will give us preliminary plans to start working with and finding funds for. Why is that important, the next two lines, when we start talking about how we're going to, how much right-of-way we're going to have, and how much construction money we'll have? And I believe that's in the next slide. All of that helps us concentrate down and get that, we go from this picture to something a little narrower, and each time we get a little bit more refined. With this, again, we are getting about $6.6 million, not about, we're getting $6.6 million in proffers on this. The Port of Virginia, there's a new program called the Port Opportunity Fund. We have been notified, the Port Board voted last, this past week. We are now guaranteed, should this project approved, a million dollars to him to help get this project going. And again, already in our budget, we have a million dollars committed that we would match. So the Port Fund is a matching program, so that actually gives us the $8.6 million to get us to that design and get it moving. The nice thing is, again, if this moves forward, the developer's committed that within a matter of days, he'll start the survey work, which is a very basic of everything we've got to do, and shortly thereafter, we'll get the additional funds and go right into hard engineering. So as I mentioned before, what is this plan? Again, it is a diverging diamond interchange at the bypass, very similar to what we're going to build at Garland Boulevard. It is widening from six, from four lanes to six lane, from that interchange out to approximately somewhere Kings Fork Road, and then from Kings Fork towards Lake Prince and a drop back to four lanes at this point. Ultimately, the four lane would be carried on towards Isle of Wight County. What is really interesting about this and conversations in the last What is really interesting about this and conversations in the last week or so, Isle of Wight has reached out to us and said, "Hey, if you guys move forward, we really want to talk to you because we see traffic coming our way. We see growth coming our way, and we'd like to do the same in our part. Can we partner together?" And certainly, we're interested in that. So again, a little better estimate on the cost here, about eight-point-three million dollars, eight-point-four million dollars in preliminary engineering. At this point, I would say somewhere around thirty-one million dollars in right-of-way costs. That is still a little bit of a wag. It is a number based on a percentage, based on what we have learned with the Route 58 project, kind of impacts, general cost of real estate. Real estate's going up every day. And again, about forty-seven and a half million dollars in construction costs. Again, where I told you a month ago, a million, a hundred million dollars. Now, we're getting a little closer, probably about eighty-six, eighty-seven million dollars in total cost to build this section of roadway. As we have gone forward over the last month, we've been having a number of contacts through state and local government. Again, as you've heard from the port officials, now we have it in writing, the Port of Virginia is very much supportive of this project and is committed to helping us obtain all the funding necessary to get to construction and completion. We've heard also from the Secretary of Transportation, again, fully backing and supporting this. Today, we received a letter from Mr. McKeachan's office, Senator McKeachan, who said, "I'm also fully behind you." And as you all are well aware, we've even had seen things on the TV, on news, where some of our federal senators, our governor are all supportive of this project and say, "This is a very important thing, not only for the city of Suffolk, but also for the Commonwealth of Virginia, and even from a national perspective, that this project moves forward." And again, we're hearing commitments to help us get the funding to build this project. So what are some of those funding sources? Again, I spoke just a minute ago about Smart Scale, how that works. That's the revenue-sharing program that this council has been very supportive of in the last number of years, that, again, is kind of a fifty-fifty match on funds as we move forward. There's always a legislative ask. We can ask the Commonwealth of Virginia to put money in the budget to help this if it's truly important. The governor's getting ready to submit a budget, and the governor's indicated we have a possibility. We can certainly ask for, and we may have an opportunity to obtain money directly out of the governor's budget. And there's the normal programs that we fund a lot of the projects that we bring before you, out of our CMAC, congestion mitigation, air quality, and RSTP, which deals with our regional surface transportation program. Both of those funds, in fact, the CMAC and RSTP applications have already been put in the hopper for this coming year to start trying to seek funding. On the federal side, there's always federal earmarks. Again, as indicated by our congressional congregation, that they would be that. There's discretionary things. So we have applied, some of these names, these federal names are different than they were just a few years ago. But many of these programs have been around for a number of years. We have applied for some of these funds in the past. There's INFRA, there's RAISE, there's PROTECT. Again, all of this is federal funding opportunities that may be here to support this project as we move forward with the support of this tonight. So with that, I believe Mr. Nguyen and I are available to answer any questions that we have not yet answered for you, and certainly stand by.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. All right, with that being said, we have an ordinance that's been presented for council's consideration. Do we have any other further questions, comments, or motions? Am I jumping here? Councilman Fawcett.
I'm going to jump that frying pan right quick. You know, I've got a lot of information here. It's book after book after book after book, from every corner of this project to every person that has written me an email, phone calls. I've just had inundation, which I want to say to each and every one that has done that, I do appreciate each and every one's corresponding. It's probably the most correspondence I've ever gotten while I've been on council in the last ten years. So I want to thank everybody for corresponding and providing information. I've had a chance to meet with several groups, the Port of Virginia, to the developers, to our staff. I mean, it's just been an ongoing process since this thing kind of hit the ground. The only thing, and I'm going to reserve a lot of comment tonight because I could probably say more than you've got time to hear, but, you know, a few months back or a few years back, I always heard the fact that people up on the dais said, "Suffolk's growing. We're growing, and we're growing, and we're growing." And as you travel anywhere else in the country, as I've had a good opportunity to do, the landscape here is not the only landscape that's changing. Landscape around the country's changing. I don't care what community you go to, where you go to, what city, what state, what town, it's changing. I come from a little town that only had about twelve-hundred people in it. It's no longer like that. So more and more, things are changing, and Suffolk's going to continue to change, well beyond every one of us in this building and in this room tonight. Suffolk is going to continue to change. It's not going to stop changing. There's going to be people that are going to be against something, and there are going to be people that are for something. There's going to be people disappointed, and there's going to be people that are not. That's just a fact of life. I've been around a while and done quite a number of things. Some of the things that I've encountered in the last week and a half have been pretty bizarre. Some of the comments, emails, phone messages. I mean, somebody called me and told me there was a space landing here. And I'm thinking, like, where are they coming from with all this? Some of this is talking out of their heads, and a lot of people have made a lot of sense. You've been convinced, you are convinced yourselves. We couldn't convince you differently unless we do what you want. You've already made your mind up. And most people, when they make their mind up, they don't change it. They don't change it at all. So just without going any further, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve the request of the rezoning for, or is it CN 2021, that's twenty?
Okay, we got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett.
Mayor, before you ask for a second, can we make a clarification if this is with the revised proffer, since there was a new proffer statement offered tonight?
With the revised proffers that have been submitted since the last go-round. Okay.
It's revised from when we had the public hearing, so it is a revised proffer statement.
Okay, but everybody has them. Okay. Okay, so the motion is for approval with the revised proffers. Who do we got? Councilman Ward?
A second.
Okay, we got a second from Councilman Ward. Any further discussion of the motion? Councilman Johnson?
I truly didn't want to come out this early, but, Robert, good presentation. I knew you'd give us a good presentation. My only concern is all of this money that's out there, why are we looking for it before this project ever came to town? I've got a 58 problem that I keep bringing up and bringing up and bringing up, but yet we have somebody come in from out of town. This is not what I'm going to say. I just want to get this off my chest. And all of a sudden, we're going to be able to find some money. But for my road, for my people that live out there, you know as well as I do, 58 is a disaster. And for us, no, please, no. No, you can't, please, folks, do not interrupt councilmen with speaking. We won't get anywhere tonight. And I understand where you're from. I'm on your side. I'm on the side of what I think is right. But I do appreciate what you've come up with, and the money may very likely be out there. But why does it take an outside person to come in here and make us start looking for it? I mean, I have been screaming for ever so long, and I don't want to talk about 58 yet, but I'm going to get to it. I'm going to go by my notes more or less here because, like all of us up here, the people of this city are not stupid. They have written, they have done their homework, they know what's going down. We all know this is a good project. Madden has put forth a good project. What my concern is, why didn't this project come to us long enough ago that we could all talk about it before it ever got to this point? And they keep telling me our process is what our process is, we can't change it. But for my God's sake, if I stay on council, we're not going to do this anymore. This is wrong, what we have done to the people of our city. And I'll get back on tangent here. Do you think when we were going up with the 2035 plan and the citizens and the council and the staff put it together, that when they said suburban, that they thought for an instant that suburban would be M2 zoning? This is my problem, not the roads, not right now. My problem is people, our people live on these farms, on these rural areas, on these roads, and we've encouraged them to live there. We put them there. We've said, "This is where we want to develop communities and neighborhoods." And now we're saying we don't want to build so many neighborhoods. I say, 20 years from now, we're going to need land to build neighborhoods for them. But besides that, the 2035, our staff and our city, everybody can say, they put that line in there to say, "Well, this gives us an out." But my point is, this is not what we, the people of this city, want it to happen to this piece of property. This is a gateway to our city. 460 is a gateway to our city. And I don't oppose warehouses. I oppose warehouses where we want to put them. We've got so many areas in this city where we can put 500-acre tracts. I don't get this. I just don't understand why we picked this one, and this is what we have to go with. And I like Madden. I think they presented a good plan here, and they've got a plan to move forward, and it's not a bad-looking plan. But if we'd met early on, figured the transportation thing out, got Pitchkettle Road off of it, left our people where they live, and not burdened them with more unbelievable traffic, protected our schools, protected our roads, continued to do the roadwork that we're talking about, and make those improvements on our terms, I don't get it, guys. This is, I have lost so many nights' sleep over this. It doesn't make any sense. I'm going to go back, I'm not finished yet. That piece of property right there that they want to buy and that they want to sell, we as a council should have looked at it a long time ago and said, "Holy crap." Sportsplex, I see the former mayor here, swimming pool center for our city. There's so many things we could do with it. We could go in and purchase part of it as a city and make things happen. We could go out and solicit other people to come in. But we're constantly putting the horse before, behind the cart. It doesn't make sense. So that's my problem. And I understand everything they're saying, and I know this would be good for the region, but it wouldn't be good for our citizens, and it wouldn't be good for our city, and it wouldn't be good for our core city, in my perspective. And it looks like what's going on here tonight, I'm not going to get my perspective, but I want to give it. The whole thing boils down to location, location, location. This location is not the location for an M2, M2 development warehouse. And this company's a strong company, but who's to say? And I don't, I've been told that this is not true, but I know it is true. Once we rezonate M2, it's M2. Whether they stay there or don't stay there, they can sell an M2. I'm on 58. How many times has that area, those warehouses been sold? I mean, Kevin, several? Couple? One? Whatever. But my point being, they are sold, and they're sold for the same use that they were before. So this is the other thing we have to look at. We have to look at risk. All this money, there is a risk. You know, I've just been told up here tonight that, "Oh, we would never lose our AAA bond rating." I'm sorry, guys. We could lose our AAA bond rating. I don't care what anybody says. If we go off the ledge, the state doesn't come forward, all these other people don't come forward, I hope they will. We've got good people in our city that can go out and solicit funds. If it goes forward, I hope it will. I hope it all works out for us. But there's a risk factor to consider. One more time, I want to go back to the process because I'm going to keep hitting it as long as I'm sitting up here. We have got to change the way we do business. I just wish that, and I told Madden this too, I wish I'd been involved. I wish we'd been told about it. I wish the city had told us about it. I wish we'd known what was coming down the road, and maybe we could have changed it so it could have worked on that site, in my perspective. Anyway, now I read in the paper, and I didn't know this, nobody told us this, it's the third-largest warehouse in the country? Is this true? I mean, that's been all over the papers. I mean, you shaking your head, no? But I'm just, where's it coming from? Third-largest warehouse in the country? It's, whatever, it's irrelevant then, but that's what's being preached to us, third-largest warehouse in the country. And that's my other thing, though, guys, and I want to say it because I want to tell council this. There's been so much stuff out there. When people get excited, people get upset, stuff gets put out that isn't accurate, and we all know it. So we need to be more humble to each other, look after each other, and only report what we know to be true. This council is diligent. We are doing the best job we can do. We're not going to agree on this, but it's fine. Everybody is serving their city in the way that they think they should. Wait a minute. Back to, it's just not the best use for it. Addressing the traffic issue, I think we all know this is the most horrific issue in our city right now. This issue over the next fifteen years is going to be, in my opinion, intolerable. I propose we fix the roads first, and then we invite somebody to come in and build the warehouses. They say we can't get the money because that's not, I mean, we can do whatever we choose to do, but I have a true problem with it. We need to be looking more at our other roads, 58, 17, 13, 32, Route 10, before we encourage more congestion. And I'm telling you, I just keep going back to Pitchkettle. It really bothers me, this Pitchkettle Road thing, because it is such a high-use road for our city, and such a part of our heritage and a part of the rural nature of our city. To my fellow council members, I say this. Each of us represent about 12,000 people or more. Mr. Duman represents a lot more than that. We have to be responsible to those people. I was very blessed tonight. I didn't have to make a decision. I did make a decision the day I learned about it because I was opposed to it that day, but my people and constituents made the decision for me. Not only did they do it, they educated me, they've educated us, and they've become a real part of this process. And I don't want the citizens to think that they're not a part of the process, because you are, and we are listening. Now, whether we listen good enough, I don't know. We'll have to wait and see. But from this council's standpoint, never has one of us put forth an issue that the whole council didn't get behind. Think about the little things, Chantel. Think about Pewsville. Think about Stormwater all over the city. We put a community center in Waileville. We look after each other. I'm telling you right now, this is not looking after my people. We have, my district, my, can't talk now, has been put under so much pressure the last few years. When we put in the warehouse district on 58, it was nothing that we were promised. The warehouses are wonderful, the people are nice, they've added something to our community. But we have lived in chaos ever since, and it's more chaos today than it was in the beginning. So you're looking at a project here that you're looking at fifteen years of chaos on that corridor. I'm not prepared for it. Now, when we have another corridor, we could put them on, or we've got other places in the city to put them. We've got warehouses basically all over our city. This one, I just oppose. I'm not even doing all of them, I'm just going to be quick here so I don't hold it up, because you obviously know how I feel. But we look at our city organizational chart, and these are the things I keep coming back to. Top of the organizational chart are the people of this city. We need to at least listen to their concerns. I don't need to tell you it has positive points, I've already said that. The bond rating thing does. I said that from the beginning, and I was told I was wrong, but that does bother me. Go back to the 2018 comprehensive plan. Remember the 2018 comprehensive plan when we were just living large? What we said in the 2018 comprehensive plan was that we wanted a green city, that we wanted a city that our children would be proud of, and we wanted a city that the agriculture district would come first, and we'd continue to preserve that. I just feel like we're going in the wrong direction. Smart Growth, I keep going back to Smart Growth. I'm not sure that we're really on page with Smart Growth. I'm going to stop. There's 1,000 things that we've been told that we, why we don't want these warehouses. I kind of want the warehouses. I don't want the warehouses where they want to put them. I don't think you put a warehouse community in the middle of a suburban community that you have urged these people to build in. What are we thinking? I, for the life of me, and as much as I want to say, "Yeah, this is cool, this will be good. It'll bring money into the city, and we'll bring a few more jobs into the city." But the placement of this is totally out of whack. I just don't get it. I've never, in my sixty-six years, seen this many people, and y'all just a few of them, but they've been, we've been inundated with people. And I dare say, the largest majority of them are opposed to this. So for us to sit here and approve this, which it looks like we may do, it's really kind of a heresy to our citizens. I don't, I know we need to do what's right for the city, but sometimes what's right for the city is listening to the people that live here. So obviously, I'm not, I'm not going to vote in favor of that.
Counselperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't intend
I don't intend to just repeat everything that Councilmember Johnson just said. I don't want to continue to make the same points, but I do have a few points that I would like to make. Councilman Johnson ended on the fact that we're here to represent the will of the people of Suffolk. And if this is not a majority, I don't know what it is. I know that I've been told, and I've talked to people who are in favor of this project, I don't deny that there are people who are in favor of it. I don't think that it's wholly a bad project. I just think that we're not ready for something of this magnitude, and I think that the vast majority of people do not want it. If there are a whole lot of people who are, who are really strongly in favor of this, they should have shown up before now, because we have not heard from them in the numbers that compare to the people that are, that are against it. So first and foremost, we are here to represent the will of the people of Suffolk, and I hope everyone is listening to that. I've had several of folks in the community say to me that this city council needs to have a vision for what Suffolk should look like in 25 years, in 50 years, and in 75 years. And if we don't protect the green space and the open spaces and the type of communities that we have, if we don't protect them now, we won't have them 25, 50, 75 years from now. We have to decide now where we're going to keep our rural areas and our open areas, because if we, if we allow them to be developed, they, we're not going to get them back, we're not going to get them back. Another thing that we've talked about is the magnitude of this project. It's, I heard staff say magnitude, I heard large and significant. This is something that we should have been talking about for a year or more, and I just don't feel like, at this point in time, there, there are still many, many, many questions. If we had time to go through the fine details, to come up with a better way to do this, it may be something that we could accept into this city, but at this moment in time, we are not prepared to take on a project of this magnitude. I want to talk a little bit about the transportation. And Mr. Lewis, thank you so much for your presentation, and you made excellent points, and really, you made excellent points on my behalf, because I've been driving a truck on 460 for the past week. And I want to tell you that I chose my route to stay off of 460 as much as possible for my 31-mile journey. And 460 and 58, as we know, are not in good shape. And I think that the state and the port have a great interest in making sure that those two thoroughfares are in the shape to handle the traffic. And Mr. Lewis, you said that, that these are already routes of preference, that's just going to increase over the next 10 years. That has nothing to do with whether or not we build a, a large project here in the city of Suffolk. The traffic is going to be coming through here, and yes, you can say, well, let's, you know, let, let it get off and let us make some money off of it. But I think the point, if you read the, if you read what the folks with, at the state level, what they're saying about supporting this, is they're supporting the improvement of these thoroughfares through the city of Suffolk as a route to the port. Has nothing to do with whether or not we're having a project. Yes, the project provides some funding. Yes, the project provides some incentive, but I, I sit here thinking, we do not need the leverage of a large project to ask the state for significant funding to produce, to improve two corridors of significance to the state, that is 460 and 58. We have plenty of information to ask for funding for both of those projects, based on current traffic, current conditions, and what we know is coming in the future, regardless of whether, what other development is going on in the city. Those are my notes. Again, I've gotten the same information that the rest, rest of you have gotten, have tried to be very thoughtful about this, but again, I feel like we're here to do the will of the people. I think we need to have a vision for where this project, where the city needs to be, not just this year or next year, but in, you know, years and generations to come. And I just don't think that this is the right project in the right place at the right time, and that we're not ready for it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Do we have any other comments? Vice Mayor Bennett.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I would just like to say to all of you that's in attendance and the ones that are watching, that are watching, I received, I didn't count them, but a number of emails, text messages, phone calls, petitions, and I did go through every last one of them. And some of the petitions that I saw, it was not only Suffolk people, but 99% of them were people from Suffolk, but there were some others that were from Isle of Wight, Norfolk, and different areas, which I appreciate their concern about what is taking place in Suffolk, but they don't live here. So that just gave me a little bit of concern with, you know, some of those people that telling us, well, we should or should not, but that, that was fine. But I, I want the people here to know that I listen, I said this time after time, I'm not a person to sit here, if someone come and say something, I don't listen. I might not satisfy you, but I do listen. So I will say this, there are a lot of concerns with traffic, trains, and everything else. We have not gotten one dime from the port or anyone about the trains, and it blocks up our whole entire city. That is something I think should have been a part of this, is being from the port, that is putting all that burden on the city with all these railroad crossings that we have, that they should be putting some money toward that as well. The 460 thing that really bothered me, as some of the council people I've already mentioned, is that the funding was a big issue in the 58 interchange. The money wasn't there, but all of a sudden, they say it's there. I haven't seen a check yet. It was promised, well, one of the meetings I was at said, well, we will support you, we're getting grants. But I know how grants work as well. You know, I can support you, but it's nothing guaranteed. So I just had some concerns about some of the process that have taken place. So I just want to thank everyone that have come out to participate many times. And I know some of you might go away happy, some might go away sad. I've had calls, wasn't many, but I did get a few calls from people that supported the project. But that was a very few, but I did get some. So, but, but anyway, I just had to make that comment, that that was some of my concerns. Not going to repeat everything that someone has said, because that'd just be taking up time, so. But that, I just wanted to comment. Thank you very much for your participation.
Council, any other comments? Okay, if not, I guess it's my turn. And I'm not going to be as brief as Councilman Johnson was. So, you know, I'll give you a second for everybody to strap themselves in. Listening to the comments, Councilman Johnson, Councilperson Butler Barlow, you're, you're exactly right. Councilman Fawcett, you know, in regards to process, we have changed a little bit where we're going to get notified about every zoning application once it goes, goes into the application process. So hopefully, that will help some, but I agree with you 100%. You know, the process itself is not geared for large projects, medium projects, and small projects, we just have a process. And normally, the mundane issues that we have to handle, it doesn't become an issue. Something like this, you know, requires a little bit more thought and input. I want to thank everyone last month for agreeing to table this for the most part, until this month, because to be honest with you, there's, I mean, there's, there's a lot of information to look at, and a lot of, not moving parts, but a lot of, a lot of factors to take into consideration, other than kind of what's in front of your face, which what is in front of your face is coming down 460, looking at 540 acres of green space and some barns, and the back end of some pickup, back end of some tractor trailers. I mean, that's, that's what we think. I have welcomed any and all comments from our, you know, concerns, opinions, suggestions from probably half the people in this room I've spoken to already. To go along with the Vice Mayor and everybody else, I mean, I read all the emails, I got them all in piles, you know, roughly over 130 emails, 40 phone conversations, 20 in-person meetings, people pop in the dealership, just want to have a conversation, face-to-face conversations here, there, where, and everywhere, and believe me, I have listened. I've had a lot of requests through the Clerk's office for, for me to call them. I may have missed a few, but up to today, I had three today. In the course of me trying to do what I need to do at work every day, or every week, 60 hours a week, I stop what I'm doing and have a conversation with somebody. Last night was a 48-minute conversation about this particular issue. And the reason for that interaction, and the reason for those conversations, is to let our citizens know that I do care about what's going on, plus, I want to hear what you have to say. Because the purpose of public hearings, the purpose of interaction with your constituents is to get their opinions, their thoughts, their suggestions. You know, I'm not nearly as smart as some people think I am, I just know smart people, and I listen. And with that being said, you know, I took the liberty to categorize and prioritize the concerns based on all the emails, all the phone calls, and all the conversations. And what I want to do, and I'm going to take the time to do, because you can't stop me, because I got the stick, I will talk as long as I feel like talking. And, but I think it's necessary, because the first thing we have to do is relay that we've listened and we know your concerns. So when I hear a concern, it needs to be addressed. Is it a real concern? Is it a conceptual thing? Is it, and how can we fix it? Can it be addressed? Can it not be addressed? So with that being said, you know, 41% of all the issues had to do with traffic, with specifically traffic, or, you know, if they were trafficking something else, they were the main concern, obviously, starting with 460 with the highest priority, followed by Pitchkettle, 58, Murphy's Mill, Kings Fork, and then Providence. 41% of the issues resolved around traffic. And then it kind of drops down significantly. 16% of our citizens were concerned with the environment, with the green space, with the quality of the water. That was number two. Number three was the comp plan, and in the comp plan also threw in location. You know, is this the right place for it, or is it not the right place for it? Because it is included in the comp plan within those boundaries. I actually spoke to the developer about a piece of property further up on 58, and he didn't know anything about it. And that's because when he was requested possible locations, he wanted it to be within an allowed zoning district, within the comprehensive plan. So the, some of that land further up on 58 is outside of that area, so he was never notified about it. But looking into it, because I know it was also suggested, you know, that the camps have some property at 600-some acres, but it's also not only in, not in the comp plan, but it's also mostly wetlands, so it's virtually not usable for that purpose. So we get the comp plan to talk about, and then number four, 10% mentioned funding. And by funding, I mean, how are we going to pay for this, and is there a tax consequence? You know, are the citizens going to have, what's it going to cost us, or what's the benefit of it? I mean, we should be getting something out of this thing. So what is it? And is it going to cost us anything? So tax concerns, incentives, funding, and then we went to the economy. And when I say economy, we talked about the quality of jobs, warehouse demand, is there demand for warehouses? And I want to address all this stuff. This is just, this is the table contents. General safety, when I say general safety, how does it affect our schools, NSA in particular? And then there's miscellaneous, there's 14% in miscellaneous. And in miscellaneous, I took the liberty to put appearance, property values, noise, and then, I don't know, I just added the just say no, which I guess that's okay, something else, take more time. So that's in the miscellaneous category. So I'm going to try to address those one at a time by the lowest priority, with some supporting information, because everybody's, everybody's entitled to an opinion, but not every, not everybody's entitled to the facts. Some of the facts are the facts. They not be what you want to hear, but it's what you need to hear, because those are the facts, they're not opinion, they're not subject to conjecture or anything else, they are what they are. So I'm going to start with the safety issue, and there's not a lot there, it's, you know, when we address safety, you know, obviously, there's nothing more important than the safety of our students. I mean, personally, I'm convinced that the improvements planned for the roadway and additional efforts would be implemented to include, which would include possible reduction in speed limits, additional stoplights, signs, signal timing, and a thorough safety analysis pre, during, and post-construction. In addition, there's a 75-foot buffer between NSA and the project, which gives them a little higher level of safety. There will also be sidewalks and multi-use trails that do not exist now in 460. There's no sidewalks in front of the academy. There will be when this is done, there'll be sidewalks on both sides of the road, which will allow for pedestrian traffic without getting squished. We also have transit enhancement in regards to whether we'll have public transit available. So that's just a little bit on safety. Let's talk about quality of the jobs and warehouse demand. Citizens have questioned, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm taking this, this isn't me, this is you, this is what the citizens have asked about, this is what the citizens are concerned about, not my concerns, your concerns. All I'm doing is addressing them, your concerns, with the knowledge that I've been able to attain with the contacts that I have, and the God knows how many hours of phone calls, meetings, and reading, and everything I can possibly get my hands on. Because regardless of how I vote, you're owed an explanation. You need to know my thought process. I could wake up willy-nilly and throw a dart at the board and see if it says yes or no. This is a big deal. This is a big deal. It is, without a doubt, you know, the most impactful law, land use decision that we've had since I've been on council, the 58 project, that was done before my time. And we can learn from that. We can learn from the 58 debacle. We're playing catch-up. We are playing catch-up on 58. So once we take a few other things for granted, then what can we do so we don't make the same mistake? So we'll talk about that, too. So where was I? We were talking about jobs and warehouse demand, and citizens have questioned the quality and quantity of the jobs that this development will provide. I agree, you know, that the number of jobs projected seems pretty high to me. I mean, I'm telling you, I'm, you know, no, I guess anybody can do a study, but I don't know where we're getting 9,000 jobs from, but I mean, I'll, I'll take 2,000. I'm easy in the jobs department. I don't think we need to beat that up, but I think we can logically assume there'll be at least a couple of thousand jobs that are going to be produced, or if even it's 50 cent, 50% to be closer to 4,000. That is a significant number. That is a significant number of jobs that you cannot just say, we don't care. You can't do that. In regards to pay, there's been a lot said about pay in warehousing jobs. I did a little bit of research, and this is in mine, I'll give it to whoever wants it, you can for you, and I'll stick it in a pile. This is from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, the Hampton Roads MSA reflects the Virginia Beach, Norfolk, Newport News, Virginia, NC metropolitan statistical area. Transportation and warehousing is predicted, or has had the largest increase percentage-wise in jobs, jobs in any other sector, any other sector. That's professional business, education, health, trade utilities, leisure hospitality, manufacturing, blah, blah, blah. It's number one. It is number one in projection. Now, average weekly raise, average weekly wages, from the State Bureau of Labor Statistics, census information, this is up to date as of 2021. Average weekly wages, the average weekly wages of transportation and housing, professional business services is one, manufacturers is two, transportation and warehousing is three, not my chart, three, education health fourth, and the total of all industries behind that. education health fourth, and the total of all industries behind that, and then leisure and hospitality significantly behind that. So looking at the graph here, it appears that transportation and warehousing is about 150 bucks a week more than the average salary. Now, that's all of them, but this is on this piece of paper and not my numbers. So the numbers themselves, as far as the quality of the job and who's going to fill them, it's not too bad. And I've got one other reference to that. I got to get to it in my, I also pulled a little bit of information off the Old Dominion website. Old Dominion has a program now, a degree in maritime and supply chain management, supply chain management. And it has what they do, four job categories, logistics analysts, general operations managers, transportation storage distribution managers, supply chain managers. Now, granted, these are managers, but logistics analysis, the average median salary, $78,740. So there's a little bit more to be said for that. In regards to Suffolk, now, let's just talk about Suffolk. I've got some great information. And if you take where the warehousing is proposed and you draw a five-mile circle around that circumference, based on the latest census, based on the most recent available data from the U.S. Census, the median earnings in Suffolk for jobs in transportation and warehousing is $47,047. Many neighborhoods in Suffolk where the median household income is lower than 45, 45,000, in other words, in many neighborhoods that are going to be included in this five-mile radius, where over half of all the households currently bring in less from all income sources and all household members in the median earnings for a job in transportation warehousing in the city. So these will provide jobs to individuals within that radius. In addition to that, it will be the only, only place you can go to work and get public transportation from downtown. You know, Suffolk's a great city, but I haven't seen too many taxis or buses running around picking people up. I mean, we kind of, I mean, we do what we can with Virginia Transit, but we struggle to get people where they need to be. So hypothetically, there's a huge group of people in census precincts where average incomes are only 26 or 28,000 dollars downtown in some of the areas, where if they don't have a car, they can jump on the red route and catch a ride back and forth from a job that'll get them 40 or 45,000 dollars a year. This also includes, those are the numbers, I've got them right here, I put them right here. I see some headshakers, but I've got the numbers. I don't make them up. Nice graphs. I got everything. So anyhow, so it's, I think that kind of squelches the, the job department. Okay, we talked about that. In regards to warehouse demand, and I spoke to somebody that the other day, and they said, well, Amazon's closing down a bunch of warehouses. Where my warehouses might, you know, they must really suck. They're going out of business. Well, you know, the warehousing, the warehouses for Amazon are the ones that Amazon figured for Amazon. That's not for the industry. You know, it'd be like, I've got 200 more cars on my lot than what I need, and I have a fire sale the next day. But, you know, Ms. Duke's a lot better at managing her inventory. She don't have to sell off a bunch of cars, you know, when the inventory goes south. So that's my problem. The reality of it is, there's only a 1.4% vacancy rate in warehousing. And I can promise you, you know, being in business for as long as I have, the entity that's working on this thing, nobody in their right mind, nobody in their right mind would invest 420 to 430 million dollars, million dollars, in a project that they're not sure anybody's going to show up. That's not, I mean, I don't even think that's feasible. And worst-case scenario, I mean, if it does go south a little bit, it's not going to hurt Suffolk a bit. And I want to talk about the M2 zoning a little bit also, what actually happens with the M2 zoning. Funding, let's talk about funding. That's the next thing. That was number three on there. 10% of the people talked about funding, tax concern. It should be noted from the beginning that we have offered absolutely no economic development incentives have been offered to the developer. I cannot think, as long as I've been doing this, I mean, we've done a little addition at Lipton, and we've done warehousing, and they've brought in a couple 100, 100 employees, and everybody's had their hand out looking for an economic development incentive. There is absolutely no tax dollars and no tax incentives going out to the developer. So we need to keep that in mind. Fiscal impact, I reached out to our assessor. I wasn't interested in the numbers that was in the fiscal impact study. I reached out to the guy that knows and said, you know, if these things come up, what are we talking about in real estate tax? And he did a three-page analysis for me. Thank you very much, Mr. Holt. Low, medium, and high annual tax revenue, somewhere between six and a half and 8.1 million dollars in just real estate tax, six and a half to eight million dollars. And I know not, money's not everything, but it sure helps, especially when the school system has got a $470 million capital improvement project, plan they got, $470 million worth of schools they want built. Where does the money come from? Water connection fees will probably be close to half a million dollars. Rollback taxes will be close to, I don't know if you thought about that or not, but you're going to get stuck with that. Somebody's going to get stuck with it. We've got rollback taxes where you have a change in zoning. So there's a tax abatement on agriculture. When it gets rezoned, you have to pick up the taxes for five years. That'll be about a half a million dollars. And that's in addition to, what did I get? Water connection fees, stormwater is another 350 to 450,000. So it's a big chunk of money. Let me see, I'm not even going to go over. Okay, let's talk about, I'm going to talk about funding for a minute. I'm going to talk about the port. In trying to find funding for, for roads and projects, I could get Mr. Lewis up here. He's a lot better at it than I am, because he's a lot more experienced than I am. But I sit on a lot of regional groups. And when it comes to trying to find money for road projects, it's which comes first, the chicken or the egg? You can't get money, for the most part, unless you have a problem, because a lot of it has to do with congestion. So you have to have a monster problem. So if we have a little baby problem, and Virginia Beach has got an area that's backed up five times more, they get the money. One of the other significant factors is the economic effect. And what's different, and Councilman Johnson had a, had a great point. Well, it was so easy to get money, how come we didn't get it for 58? Why are we behind the eight ball? What's different this time than last time? Who is, you know, we don't want the same thing, for sure. Well, the difference is the port of Virginia. That's the big difference. And I'll go into that some more. And also the big difference is all this federal money that's coming down. That's a one-time deal that'll be available for the next five or six years. And then it'll dry up, and that'll be the end of it. So there's, there's two things right there. Senator Kane said, and this is kind of alludes to what I'm talking about, a locality's need for transportation funding to spur, and I'm quoting him, "to spur a regional economic development project would likely move it higher up the list of priorities." The port, he said, "is poised to continue on a high growth rate, especially with record cargo volumes that have made it the busiest four-month stretch in history." And then I'll skip a couple sentences. Quote, "they're doing their work with the community. I wouldn't be surprised if the leaders of the community came back to us in some point and tell us, here's what we need." Now, this is Senator Kane, and we all know how politicians are to pretty much tell you anything you want to hear. But we have to put some kind of credence in what he's talking about. And I've got one more sentence. "This is the perfect time to be exploring what you need, because Virginia is going to get significantly more transportation monies than would have been the norm, at least for the next five or six years." This isn't money that may be coming. This is money that is coming. So it's not like, I like the project, let's move it up in priority, and I love everybody. If we get some money, I'll let you know about it. I mean, the, this is, I like the project, it should be moved up in priority, and we have money coming. So, I don't know, you know, maybe you don't believe anything anybody says, and that may be the best way to go. Getting back to funding, you know, we're, we were able to acquire the additional million dollars from the port. It doesn't sound like much, but the port can't really fund roads. That's not their, not their, it's not their mission to fund roads. You know, they found a way to help with the design work, but it's a million dollars. And what's more important with the port is that the port has the staff with the knowledge and the experience and the history of knowing how to go after these federal and state grants. They know the numbers to call, the buttons to push, and how the process works. They were successful in getting 1.2 billion dollars last year in funding, not because they did it, they got it. And they have promised us that they will work with us. There's no guarantees, but like I said, the port of Virginia, Secretary of Transportation, Governor of blah, 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 stated they're all committed to working with us. After working with the port officials, I'm convinced that they'll be able to do what they're going to do. Senator Kane said what he was going to say. And I understand that there's not a promise of funding, but I got to put some credence in, in what is explicitly said and further inferred. Federal funding will be a key strategy. In the Federal Funding Department, they mentioned some on the screen, but specifically, specifically, we got, this is what's coming down the pike in federal funding. The big one is the one that's passed, the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, the IIJA. It's 318.855 billion dollars, billion dollars. Now, it gets, you know, thrown around, but that's where most of it's coming from. That's available fiscal year '21 through '26. And then we got some discretionary funding. We got the RACE, which is 2.275 billion, INFOR 1.55 billion, and Protect 1.4 billion. And then you got earmark. So there's got to be some money there. I can't believe there's not money there. And a lot of it is one-time money for the next five or six years. In regards to the comprehensive plan, plus the cost of the projects gone down to 86 million, and we already got nine of that, so now we're down to 77 million dollars. In regards to the comp plan, the comp plan is a plan. A lot of it is subjective as to how you look at it. I do think that the staff may, I'm not going to go, I was going to read a bunch of it, but I'm not going to do that. I think the staff has made a reasonable determination as far as the comp plan is concerned. Some folks may argue with that. I think the location, I've heard a lot that this isn't the right location. I mean, personally, I think it's a great location. I mean, it's just me, and I'm going to tell you why. I know, I know. I look, I've been called stupid, I've been called stupid, stubborn, and everything else. But the reason, okay, now, why do I think it's a good location? I know, boo. It's at the intersection of 460 and 58. Truck traffic's going to come from the port. That's a given. It's going to go west on 58. It's either going to continue to go down 58, or it's going to get off at 460. That's the reality. That's the reality. There's no other place to go. There's three gateways. Doesn't do that. Some of y'all shaking your head, that's not how it works. It's got to, it's got to work that way, unless they go down 64. It's either 58 or 460. Where the location is, is immediately at the intersection of those two freeways, if you will, which means that if they take a detour to go in here, they come off of 58, they go on 460, they travel 800 yards, they take a left-hand turn and go into the warehouse. They don't pass anything. More than two-thirds of that traffic will come out of the warehouse, take a right-hand turn, go back another 800 yards, and be back up on 58 again. So the only additional traffic that will go on 460 will be some that'll stop into the warehouse off of 58 and then get back on 58 again. I mean, it is what it is. There's not another scenario. So we are going to get that increased truck traffic. I'm going to skip about half this stuff, because I'm going to be here all night. I think another thing to note is, I mean, we've, we've been told there's 540 acres of agricultural land. I mean, the newspaper got it wrong this morning. Said it's 540 acres agricultural land. It's not. It's 135 acres of B2 up front. What is 135 acres of B2? 135 acres of B2, if you go down Main Street, you look at Lowe's, you look at Walmart, you look at all the traffic that goes into Lowe's and out and all those stores, you look at, you look at Walmart, all the Walmart stores, and all the traffic going in and out, that's 47 acres of B2. So literally, you could feasibly have three times that much traffic on 460 in the B2 portion of it alone. It's almost three times that size. So it's, I know you look at what we're getting versus what you've got, but you have to look at what you're getting versus what you could get. And that B2 zoning, I don't know how I got all off course here, but B2 zoning includes more car washes, pizza places, mattress stores, tobacco shops, flea markets, a shopping center, pretty much any size that you want to make it. Trying to get through this thing as fast as I can. All right, let's talk about the environment. So much for that. Let's talk about the environment. Environment, water, loss of agricultural land, and rural character of our city. These are all legitimate concerns. Everything's a legitimate concern. I know some of y'all think it's funny. It's not really funny to me. Let's take a concern and let's talk about it realistically. Environment, water, loss of agricultural land, and rural character of our city. In regards to the environment, I don't have any expertise to comment on. However, we do have a litany of environmental agencies with oversight, many regulations that must be adhered to to protect the public interest, which also includes stormwater management. In regards to stormwater management, there's a requirement for preparation of a major water quality impact assessment. They've got to address all the drainage areas tributary to Lake Mead, a drinking water reservoir with Port, which we know, compliance with applicable wetlands, CBPA zoning requirements, and construction of on-site water quality best management practices, BMPs, will be part of the plan. The Department of Planning and Community Development, Department of Public Works have to review that, make sure there's no objections. They'll also be responsible for the final design and compliance review in regards to stormwater. And also, I received a, an email this today from a constituent who had a legitimate question. And he said, "If this project is voted on to move forward, we respectfully request that the City of Suffolk is transparent and makes information available to the public concerning its plans to preserve the integrity, quality, and safety of public drinking water to avoid impacts during site preparation, construction, and post-construction." And I couldn't agree with that more. We absolutely have to adhere to every single requirement that is out there in regards to environmental concerns and water quality. This is somebody mentioned, but does the City of Portsmouth know what's going on? They were made aware four to five months ago. We have not had, from my understanding, we haven't received any comments or issues other than the information we provided them. In regards to the loss of agricultural land, the parcel's 540 acres, 135 of it's B2. So in essence, we got 105 acres. There's been a continuing trend, and I think Councilman Fossett alluded to this, across the country of reduced farmland due to urban expansion, you know, and it really started back in the 80s. Since '82, more than 31 million acres of U.S. agricultural land have been lost. The American Farmland Trust reported that an additional 175 acres of farm and ranch land are lost every hour to make way for housing and other industries. So this is definitely a trend all the way across the country. So my question is, well, how, how have we fared? Where are we? I mean, do we want to put a truck in the middle? I mean, do we want to put a truck in the middle of the city emblem, or do we want to be able to leave a peanut there? I mean, I would like to leave a peanut there. I want to put everything into perspective. The oldest reference I could find, and once again, I don't, I didn't find it, my assessor found it for me, went back to the 2005 comprehensive plan. At that time, the city had 59.3% of its land was zoned agricultural. These are my numbers, they are what they are, 59.3%. As of today, this minute, the City of Suffolk has 153,940 acres of land zoned agricultural out of a total land mass of 275,200 acres, equating to 55.9%. So in 17 years, we've gone from 59.3 to 55.9. So we have lost 3.4% of our agricultural land in the last 17 years. This is well below half of the average. So all in all, I think we're doing pretty good. I mean, it looks like we're getting a lot more than that, but these numbers don't lie. These are the numbers as of today. So, and we need to ensure that we continue to do that, just like Councilman Johnson said, and Councilperson Butler Barlow, you know, we do not want to lose that in our city. And I know it seems like it's a lot more than that, but it's not. Those are the numbers. We've lost 3.4% in 17 years and still have 55.9% of all our landmass in agricultural zoning. A new number that came to my attention concerning development is that out of the total of the 540 acres, there's 216 acres in there that's really not going to have anything on it between all the retention ponds and in between the buildings. The 75-foot buffer all along Murphy's Mill Road is big. That's big. For the people who live on Murphy's Mill Road, they're done. There'll never be any traffic on Murphy's Mill Road. They just eliminated it all. If a housing development goes back there, there's going to be traffic on Murphy's Mill Road. So that 75-foot buffer on Murphy's Mill Road, it's 75 feet, it has a six-foot berm, it has vegetation on that, it has trees behind that, and then it has a fence behind that. So Murphy's Mill Road is, is, they're good. I won't go into this other number because I don't like it. All right, and let's get to the big one so we can go home. Traffic. Traffic is absolutely number one concern. 41% of all the issues have to do with traffic. Traffic, traffic, traffic. We got no access on Murphy's Mill Road. That squash is that. So what do we have to make sure of? We got to make sure that eastbound traffic on 58 does not get off on Pitchkettle Road, regardless of what it takes. Regardless of what it takes. You got to put a cop there all day. Got to put a big flashing sign there that says, "No through traffic, Port 460, next exit." I can't imagine anybody going past that. But that's what has to happen. We must ensure that traffic will not back up in the off-ramp of 460. That's pretty much been taken care of because unlike 58 and 10, which has signals that are sequenced down the street, you can't really time it to allow this, that traffic to be relieved. That's not going to be an issue here. And Mr. Lewis, you can correct me if I'm wrong there. Councilman Johnson said we need to go casual, so I'm going casual. We must, we got to ensure that traffic flows smoothly and safely down 460, past NSA to Lake Prince. When allowed, we must ensure all traffic entering the rear of the property can turn on, that can only turn on Pitchkettle to Kingsforth Road. None of it can go left. It's got to go right. It's got to go right. I've been ensured that they've got directional things, concrete, that only allow you to go one way. And then we got to make sure that nobody goes down Providence. And I know I'm saying we can, and everybody's going to shake their head and say, "Nobody pays attention to signs, nobody cares, nobody..." I mean, at some time, we got to make sure that it works. Some of the smaller stuff, we talked about M2 zoning. The M2 zoning, there were, and this, and this is all constituents called me two weeks ago, a week before last, and said, you know, "There's still some stuff in that M2 zoning that's going to be allowed that hasn't been proffered out." And I looked at it, and sure enough, there's a whole page in there that should have gone away with some ugly stuff in it for M2. So I made a phone call, and the proffer was amended to add those nine things. Now, there are a total of 39 uses, 39 uses that would normally be allowed at M2 that will not be allowed if this gets rezoned. And this is a conditional rezoning. So if Matten buys this thing today, flips it tomorrow, goes broke two days from now, it doesn't make any difference. It stays with it. There is nothing that I could see that is objectionable, that would still be allowed in this M2 zoning. No chemical stuff, no spill stuff. I mean, it's, I don't have it all in front of me, and I'm sure you don't want me to go through 39 uses, but there's all, there's 39 prohibited uses of M2. So that's not going to happen. The question of appearance was another concern. And what's this thing going to look like? Coming into the gateway of our city, what is this going to look like? I haven't visited any of Matten's other locations. I mean, I've viewed the websites, and they all look pretty good to me, but one of our citizens took a trip there, went to Frederick, and he's very, very well-respected in the community, as well-respected as anyone I know, and I've only lived here for 47 years. It was associated with NSA, and he wrote a two-page letter of support. And one of those paragraphs has to do, it says, "Matten's warehouse facility and operations in Frederick, Maryland are exemplary. Having recently traveled to Frederick, Maryland to view the Matten Warehouse Facility's first, firsthand, I can attest to their quality, attractive appearance, and seamless integration within a residential neighborhood. The concrete buildings exhibit stylish architectural features," I didn't write this, "are attractively landscaped with trees, bushes, and berms, and are connected by sidewalks and irrigated lawns. The warehouse facility in Frederick is spacious and does not have the appearance of a crowded industrial site." So assuming that they're going to produce the same product, which would be the seventh or eighth of that nature, we know there's 214 acres that are not going to be covered with something. There's 18 BMP ponds. Of course, that will attract some geese who, you know, could create a problem, but there are 18 BMP ponds. I didn't write this, this came from somebody else, so I just, I'm going to throw that out there. And then we're going to talk about, what are we going to talk about? I'm not going to talk about all the upgrades in transportation. I was going to talk about all that, but we've, we've done that too. We don't knew, need to do it anymore. We're going to skip that part. We're going to skip the federal funding part. We already talked about that. And we're going to skip the DEQ part. So to some extent, I've addressed every single concern that folks have had, good, bad, ugly, because that's what I'm supposed to do. I'm supposed to take what you're concerned with, I'm supposed to look into it, and then once I find out whether it can be addressed or not, balance it against the pros and the cons. I think I've answered every one of them. In my decision-making process, I mean, I've arrived at the following conclusion, and I think number one is the Port of Virginia, because I said there's two factors, two overshadowing factors, the Port of Virginia and the possibility of federal funding. And I'm going to explain the importance of both because they work hand in hand. The Port of Virginia has a lot of support from everybody, so that's a good thing. That means they can nudge people wanting to get us money. The Port of Virginia will continue on a high-growth curve and has been experiencing record-setting volumes. Commonwealth Virginia has invested over $800 million to renovate, modernize, and expand the port over the past decade. The port's in the midst of a $1.4 billion expansion. In addition to $225 million that they just invested in dredging to make it the ultimate goal of making this port the most competitive in the East Coast. With that being said, it is quite apparent that truck traffic going to and from that same port where they're spending this millions and billions of dollars will increase significantly as time goes on. That is the reality. It's not us, it's not the City of Suffolk, it's not, is that traffic coming or not? You can't invest billions of dollars and then expect for that port to grow, which we're not investing any money, but that's what's going to produce that traffic, which is ultimately going to end up, a lot of it, on 460, given the 460 and 58 split, with 460 having the highest projected increase at 20%. So it's relevant and significant to conclude that that truck traffic will continue over the coming years. So where does that put us? Based on all that information, indisputable information conducted at the Port of Virginia, property already has the B2 zoning that could create 50 to 60 vehicle trips. When considering traffic of zoning stayed the same, the same, the B2 traffic would be added to the additional truck traffic, eventually creating a necessity to improve 460 in the near future. And that's what's going to happen. It doesn't have to be today, or next year, or five years from now, and sometimes I don't even, I don't even know why I worry about it, because 10 or 15 years from now, I won't have to worry about it. But we're going to get stuck in the same position we are with 58, 10 years from now. When that traffic is increased to the extent we have to do something with it, we're behind the eight ball, and where does the money come from? So with that, at this time, you take into, take into consideration that traffic is going to increase. And then combine that with the fact that right now, for the next five to six years, there's a huge availability of one-time federal funds. That's for sure. It's not maybe, that's for sure. That money's coming, 330-some billion dollars is going to go somewhere. So for us to participate in that 331 billion, what we would like to say is, "Write us a check, we'll fix the road, and then we'll go do a project." But unfortunately, it doesn't work that way, because somebody's going to ask them for money and say, "We got a project. This project is bringing jobs. This project, not only jobs to Suffolk, but it's going to bring jobs for the Commonwealth of Virginia. It's tied into the port, and we need some money to make it work." You've got something to talk about. The fact that we've got $8 million already to do all the design and engineering work is monumental. You cannot go to somebody and say, "Look, what do you think it is? You know, give us some money." Well, where are the plans? How are you going to do it? What, what's that, how much is that going to take care of? You don't get any money. You got to have something in front of you. So here are the plans. We broke it down. We need $79 million. If you give us $23 million, we can finish this portion of it. And then some politician can hang their hat on it and say, "I got this out there, I made this happen, we created this many more jobs, we got this much more being added to our economy from the port." That's the reality of it. By using the resource available now, we may be able to actually get ahead of a problem instead of behind it. I want to be ahead of the curve. I don't want to be behind the curve. So in the final analysis, I realize there's been a lot of, there's a lot of controversy. I hadn't made up my mind, I mean, honestly, God, I don't think I made up my mind the last night, 2:00 in the morning, but anyhow, some of y'all argue I didn't. But anyhow, I believe all members of council, regardless of their position, just like Councilman Johnson said, and I appreciate him saying that, everyone on this dais has the best interests of our citizens at heart, even though it may not agree with your viewpoint right now. I know I do. Regardless of the outcome, I will respect the position and ultimate decision of my fellow council members, and I hope, I sincerely hope, that our citizens and counterparts will as well. One of the great things about our city is its citizens. And I can promise you, I haven't, personally, I haven't sold anybody on anything. I had a meeting with a councilperson yesterday, and he can attest to it, so it's not you, Shelley, he can attest to it. The first thing I said to him is, I didn't say, "I don't care how you vote." I said, "But I'm not selling you on anything. All I know, all I want to do is give you whatever information I have, and whatever you decide is okay with me." And I meant it when I said it. But I do want to thank all our citizens for their input, because it is important. I have learned so much, I've checked on so many things. I mean, it's just, in the last 24 hours, I've had three things I've checked on. So I appreciate that input. I appreciate all the help from the staff, from the city manager, the assessor's office in particular, for answering my questions and supplying me with the requested information. It's not a decision that I've taken lightly, and I know I've been a long time, but I've been a long time working on this, a long, long time. And I know there's a lot of people shaking their head because they're not going to like the way I vote. I understand that. And for the folks that live on Pitchkettle, you are trying to protect your quality of life. I got it. I got it. And it's our job to make sure that we do that. We can't do that. We can try to do that. It's a decision that I spent counsel's hours obviously researching. I've tried to consider all the pros and cons, not only affecting us today but tomorrow. It's particularly difficult when you have a genuine concern for the citizens who have serious reservations about the negative effects, both actual or perceptual. Be assured that I'm not, I am not enamored with warehouses, nor do I like traffic, especially truck traffic. I hate truck traffic. I have no obligation whatsoever to the port, the developer, the governor, or any other elected official. My only concern is for the citizens in Suffolk. And in conclusion, my reasoning may be flawed in your opinion, but my purpose is not. I'm concerned that for all the reasons stated, I'm convinced that for all the reasons stated, that the best action for our city today would be to support this ordinance, and I'm sorry to take up that much of your time. So do we have any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, we've got, it's been so long ago, I don't even know who did what. We got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, and we have a second from Councilman Ward. Not hearing any further discussion, council members prepare to vote. Council members, please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of five to three, with Vice Mayor Bennett, Councilmember Butler Barlow, and Councilmember Johnson voting in opposition.
Okay, we will now move to resolutions, staff reports. We have no resolutions, we have no staff reports. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing for October 5th to receive public comment and ordinance granting a license agreement for the non-exclusive right and privilege to occupy and use the streets, alleys, and public places of the City of Suffolk for the purposes of constructing, installing, and maintaining facilities for telecommunications services within the corporate limits of the City of Suffolk, Virginia. A motion would be in order. What is the pleasure of counsel? Councilman Fawcett?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second? Councilman Goldberg?
Second.
Do we have a second from Councilman Goldberg? Do we have a discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Council members, please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Oh, we have no resolutions, we have no staff reports. Our next motion is to schedule a public hearing for October 5th, 2022, to receive public comment on an ordinance granting a license agreement for the non-exclusive right and privilege to occupy and use the streets, alleys, and public places of the City of Suffolk.
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor, that's the one we just did.
Did I just do that?
Yeah, we need to move on to the next motion.
Okay, our next motion is to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, October 5th, 2022, at 4:00 PM, unless canceled, and the motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, Councilman Williams, Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson, is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? In this show, please explain the guidelines.
Yes, we have non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speaker" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Roger Leonard, 550 North Liberty Springs Road, representing self regarding strategy for further development- strategy for further development in Suffolk.
Roger Leonard, 550 North Liberty Springs Road, Suffolk. I think that's a pretty good title. What I'd like to speak to you about is what I've noted after coming back to the city after many years. Served in the federal government for many years as a senior planner, regional director for HUD, other positions, and now working for some of the governors. I consider all of you up there my friends, my fellow citizens, and I think you have a tough job. I think you just made a mistake, but that's your call. You were elected. I think when you take a look at the strategy of development in the city, recently I've gone through a couple of applications, and it's been somewhat trying. I think if you take a look at how the UDO functions now, and the depth of experience from the staff, which I've worked with many city councils, probably over 20 or more, what I'm surprised about is the fact that so many of these projects move forward without a clear understanding of all of the elements that you should consider. As an example, the mayor made a comment that a 50-foot buffer at a huge project that you just approved was a huge buffer. But do you know that the UDO tangles up things to the point where you could take a small lot, a small development on M2 property, and have a 100-foot setback? I think it points out some of the dysfunction of an aging document. We built the UDO 25 years ago or so. The city has changed a lot since then. Your comprehensive plan, I think we proved tonight, doesn't inform the citizenry of what's going on. You need to take a look at that. Now, you also had a significant staff turnover over the last year, from what I've found out. And you've moved up a lot of people from lower-level positions to much higher-level How do you fix that? How do you deal with the way the city works? What you might want to take a look at is how to move the experience level and the performance of staff forward better. Well, it starts with better documents, better guidance. They can't call you about everything. The UDO needs an update, and why it's got thousands of amendments points to that issue. There should be a revamp. And I think that your comprehensive plan, which you seem to throw out the window quite readily, is dysfunctional. So I would suggest to you, look to those two documents to start the process. And from there, I think you need to take a look at who's sitting in what seats. Is it working? Are they making decisions? Are they an inspired, confident leader? I think that we could do better. I think that you, as the council, have the obligation to look at that. So I would like to bring that to your attention. Now, to be honest with you, I've been gone a long time, and I think this is an unbiased view. I obviously carry biases like everybody. I've been tangled up with you before, and hopefully in a few months, I'll be out of your hair. I'm actually relocating, so hopefully that goes well. But I'll wrap up with this. The experience that I've had over the last 10 years, looking over some very complex planning documents and planning policy and implementation of literally billions of dollars, you can do better. You, as a council, you as a city, you as a staff, you can do better. It really revolves around engagement with the city, and I know many of you, Mayor, I know you engage with people all the time. I've been around you a couple of times, and you're taking calls left and right. I don't think that's a problem. The problem is what you have to work with. So I would suggest a review of the UDO, the comp plan, and the process of informing the citizenry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Next speaker, Stuart Boyce, 5121 Indian Trail, representing self regarding Port 460.
Stuart Wayne Boyce, 5121 Indian Trail, Suffolk, Virginia. Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Bennett, and Council. I really don't know what to say. What I was planning on saying, I do have, excuse me, I do have something that I wrote, if y'all, I mean, that's kind of after the fact, but I would like for maybe y'all to take some time to read it, or some of it, or whatever. But like I said, I'm just really disappointed in the vote tonight, but that's, you know, y'all did what you wanted to do, and honestly, I don't think that you voted the will of the people. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Denise Merton, 4041 Kingston Place, representing self regarding communication
Mayor, city manager, city council members, my name is Denise Merton. I live at 4041 Kingston Parkway. It's been a long summer and a long night for all of us, hasn't it? As many of you have pointed out, there has never been as much outcry about an issue in Suffolk than we have seen in the past few months. Now that the vote is over, we all know there is still much to do. While you voted yes tonight, the citizens are not done. We will use every opportunity we have to stop or slow down the construction of the monstrosity you approved tonight without really hearing what we said. Citizens have learned that it is our responsibility to keep an eye on what our local politicians and city staff are doing. We exercise our right and responsibility when we vote, but it shouldn't end there. Many people have told me that their involvement in the Port 460 issue has opened their eyes to how much more important it is to be informed of and engaged in issues that are right here, literally in our backyards, than the national issues that so many of us get wrapped up in. Moving forward, I know that many of us will continue to stay engaged in what happens in our city and work to make our community a better place to live. But to make that happen, there is work for this council and our city staff to do. The day after the July 19 Planning Commission meeting, Mayor Dooman claimed that the crowd that had shown up were only, quote, "speaking for themselves" and not the other 90,000 or so Suffolk citizens. Some council members became defensive and claimed they were simply following the established process for a rezoning request. But let's get real. A rezoning request for the third-largest warehouse facility in America should not be the same one as for letting me get, keep chickens in my backyard. At one point, Mayor Dooman said, quote, "If anyone has a better idea for how the community should be involved, let me know." Well, Mr. Mayor, we have lots of ideas. If only the council and city staff would take the time and effort to reach out and listen to us. The city knows how to reach us, to tell us the wind is picking up, a storm is coming, or a heat wave is on the way. So why can't you do a better job of working with us on the really big issues that will permanently impact our city's character and quality of life? We should not always be constrained to the rules of a public hearing where citizens receive limited time for input and get no clear answers to their questions before a vote is taken. Also, city council members have a responsibility to treat their constituents with respect. Despite the righteous indignation that some of you have expressed that we are questioning your decisions, the citizens have managed to keep our discussion focused on the issue, including the things you've told us about it, as well as how you said it. Too often at these meetings, when we should be talking about the pros and cons, several of you have instead used the time to speak disrespectfully to the citizens, treating us as if we are ignorant peasants, when in fact, citizens researched this project to a far greater degree than paid city staff did. Your words and how you say them are indicative of what you think of us. It was infuriating for us to sit through these meetings quietly listening to you, but we did, and we deserved better. Thanks to those of you who did seem to welcome the voice of the people, but you should have shared your thoughts and decision-making processes as well. We don't deserve to have information withheld or not understand why we're heading to or have reached a particular conclusion that will have impacts on our entire city. It's true, we don't have to like everything you say or do, but we deserve to have input and hear the reasons why long before a critical vote is taken. In short, after this, a more constructive and respectful dialogue must be established among citizens and our community's leaders, which through our votes is you. As we move forward, you must find ways to make that happen.
Next speaker, Kelly Hangler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, representing the Chucka Tuck Eclipse Hobson Heritage Civic League regarding bacteria levels in water megasites.
Good evening, council. My name is Kelly Hangler, 9345 Eclipse Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. I have well over 200 letters here. We're going to go door to door, signature for signature, and every landowner on all five first miles of the Nansman River, Lake Mead, Cahoon, Spates Run, because we have a bacterial issue, and it's not Portsmouth issue, it's not Norfolk's issue, it's not Suffolk's issue. We're Virginians, and it's our issue. I'm really disturbed right now. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you, Shelley Butler Barlow, for speaking for what Virginia is based off of. The common law in Virginia, okay, from what we were based on at the House of Burgesses to current, is the consensus of landowners. How do I find that out? Oh, I consulted an attorney, okay? And how did I find that out? Because they said, how do I word a letter such as "we are taken seriously"? And they said that if you ask, and Vice Mayor, thank you, I'm sorry to have, take you out of your seat, sir, and I thank you for your comments as well, because we are consensus. We are the landed people, and I don't mean to exclude others who do not have land at this time. Please do not hear that. I am talking about basic common law principle. What disturbs me is that we have a 19.9-mile river, okay? That the environmental concerns is not concerning. I appreciate the gentleman who came up before because you ran, Mayor, on the UDO needing to be rewritten. We are a busted, broken mountain right here. We have been efforting to do a 2026 celebration for the 250th anniversary of the Independence Day for America, but you know what? Let me stop everything I'm doing in my world. And everybody up here, our entire summer, there are people here that right now, they don't mind because they don't talk to me every day, but I have zero will to ever speak to again. This is not nationalism. This is our America. This is the soil we stand on. We care for community, and the landed landowners won't get listened to? So let me tell you a little quick thing in 2 minutes and 33 seconds. I think it's real gitchy, 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 guga, okay? That we have a project that was rolled up in here eight, nine months ago into pre-submit meetings because we're here to support growth in our community. Eight to nine months ago, Governor Northram kick-started a great plan. Our General Assembly was up there. They're all working, $150 million, to start looking at what else we need to do for next level to support the port. Not good enough. Eight to nine months of our manpower hour, not on the 10, not on the 13, not on the 32, not up in the issues that are going on in the community, that we got American Recovery Act money for. No, we need to import what happened with SB 28 up at the General Assembly where we're going to gas lamp like we did the solar farms, and we weren't prepared for that, okay? Because the state said so. That is what happened with Matten. I mean no disparaging word to them. But you know what? The rest of Suffolk is due their turn. Period. The existing communities here that have adopted projects, that we need to integrate all of the rooftops, all of the residences, all of what we've taken on. We have not short shrive the Port of Virginia, but they haven't, as has been pointed out by esteemed members here on this council, showed up here to offer anything else until this time, until some magic bullet showed up. And I'm sorry, Mr. Lewis, you shined up the beautiful parts of the 460 project, but you left a lot of facts out, sir. This group of people are so well-read because we love Suffolk, and I've told you that before. You will not kill the gratitude in our hearts, because what we're going to do is we're going to take this little 200 right here, and what's going to happen is we're going to grow it to 1,000. We want a public hearing and a full environmental assessment because what happened before in 460, not once, but twice, okay, is somebody's duda, duda, ay, not kidding with that little rhyme, I need something right now, and ran down the street because it was the greatest economic thing ever. And twice, VDOT and Army Corps of Engineers, not trying to get in anyone's way, said you can't do that. All the way from President Jimmy Carter to George W. Bush, there has been designated coastal zone management because we are the coastal plain, bipartisan across the board. But we keep knocking. We have protections of our water because it's the only water we have, and this is only Suffolk we have. We will be celebrating, we will be the 2020, 250th anniversary here, and I will tell you what, let freedom ring because we are going for the environmental, and we're already deep in the legal, looking at the land use issues around this, and was this a proper project called a megasite? When we don't have a UDA, UDO that can stand up to normal processes. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Francine Hoffar, 132 Manning Road, representing self regarding
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for letting me come up here and talk with you. I'm very not used to this at all, but I am used to complaining about the property that I love that is disappearing because of the waterway that has been neglected for a long time. My beloved late husband, who just passed away less than a year ago, died of double pneumonia. He didn't have COVID because we had to be careful because the doctor told him he had tuberculosis. It's not contagious, but it is from the soil. 132 Manning Road is a slight hill coming down from Holland Road. Big gas station, big church on the corner. We get all the trash that comes down. I'm not complaining about that. I'm complaining about the waterfall across the street coming into my yard. The houses were built after we purchased the place, three-quarters of an acre. My husband loved it. He worked out in it all the time, and he tried so hard to keep the dirt from going in the ditch. It used to be a ditch. Now it's a waterway. The Army Corps of Engineers came about 14 years ago. Oh, please forgive me, I did lie. I've told somebody we were here. I was complaining for 18 years. It hasn't been 18. We've been here for 16 years in this home, and I've only been complaining for 14 years, since trees. We have a couple of big trees that had fallen, one on our house, and one down along, in fact, it hit the power lines. Great, big, beautiful trees. Problem is, is the water comes rushing out. It's just no control. No control. Problem is, is the water comes rushing out, it's just no control, no control. It just eats the sides of the trees and the termites get them, and the beautiful tree, rotten on the bottom, falls, nobody wants to help me take it out. My brother-in-law comes from Montana to help us, he cuts it all up, puts it in a pile, and a young fellow comes and says, can I have that? I mean, it sat there for a long time, but that's not the biggest problem, I mean, there's all kinds of problems come to it. I've got, I've got a pear tree that's dying, an apple tree that's dying, I've got roots sticking up this high out of the ground, I'm a 75-year-old widow woman now, and I feel like I need to get a little bit of help. I've been trying, my husband's been trying, for 14 years, to get some soil or to get somebody to help us, well, we weren't trying to get soil then, but I am now, to maintain the waterway that is out of control. There used to be a ditch, the Army Corps of Engineers said it's a waterway now, that was 14 years ago. Two years before that, we loved the place, it was beautiful, we had daffodils, now the daffodils that our land has gone. I don't know how much property we lost, but I have sinkholes in my yard, I wish somebody, Mr. Williams, thank you very much, you helped me, you gave somebody my name, and he called me, he was very kind, but I am still grieving, I was grieving at that time, where I'm a little crazy, and I don't even remember who he was, but he was a smart, nice man, and I don't think he was able to help me. So here I am, very awkward, very unlearned, but I do have respect, and I hope to have respect given back to me. So we had to buy five and a half tons of rip to fill out, and this is costing us a lot of money, plus, we pay quite a bit of tax, and then I had to have my house put on braces, you know, had to have it lifted, because it was settling. You walk in my house and everything shook. Well, I'm not the only one that has that problem in my neighborhood, because the waterway isn't controlled. The water's taking it all away, and neighbors, they're even losing, their houses are settling. I'm not the only one, I'm just the one in the hole now. That's what I live in, a hole, but it's a beautiful place, it was very beautiful, and that's all I'm asking for, is somebody to please try to maintain the waterway, at least if they don't do that, maybe they can give me a little bit of soil. Martha Reynolds used to live there when she was younger, and her dear husband, Richard, he worked on that ditch, and the city gave him a big pile of dirt to put in their yard. Now, every time I ask somebody to help, they say, no, pass the buck, pass the buck, I can't do it, no, can't do it, can't help you, can't help you. Well, I'm here hoping that maybe you guys might be able to think about it. Come to my home, stand in my backyard, my husband bought us an electric lawnmower, so I could ride it when he was sick, it's brand new, I only got to ride it once, but I can't ride it, because it hurts my back, because the tree roots are this high, and the sinkholes are this deep. I planted grass in an area, and it was coming up real beautiful.
I'm sorry, ma'am, but that concludes your time, if you could wrap it up, give you a little bit extra.
Thank you, I'm just a little bit on the nervous side.
That's okay, you done really well.
Thank you, I hope I make sense to you all.
Yes, ma'am. You did great.
Well, I just spent a whole lot of money to get my house braced up, and I really can't afford to get a bunch of dirt put in my yard, but I do save my compost, and I put a whole bunch of that beautiful compost out of my tumbler, it filled up a big wheelbarrow. I save my scraps, Mr. Williams, I told you about that, I save all the scraps except for the pits, because we don't want rats, and the orange peels, and I got them all in the tumbler, and I emptied it, and I put them around my apple tree and my pear tree. And I don't think it's going to help them, but if I had more dirt, I'd be a lot happier.
Okay, we need to, we need to give somebody another turn.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker, Rhoda Young, 601 Church Street, Norfolk, Virginia, representing Rhoda Young Live Communication Corporation regarding Suffolk. Our final speaker this evening is Curtis McKenzie, 1008 Hellpoint Road, representing self regarding Port 460. That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
All righty, we're moving right along here. Okay, we'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
First addition to this evening's agenda, the following individuals have been nominated to represent the City of Suffolk at the respective meetings. The Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference Urban Section Meeting, Councilmember Lou Ward as the voting delegate, and Councilmember Leotis William as the alternate voting delegate. And the Virginia Municipal League Annual Conference Annual Business Meeting, Councilmember Leotis William as the voting delegate.
Counsel, a motion being ordered. Councilman Fawcett?
So moved, Mayor.
Councilman Johnson.
Okay.
A second from Councilman Johnson, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Madam, all council members, prepare to vote, please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Let's do a roll call real quick. Councilmember Butler-Barlow?
Yes.
Councilmember Fawcett?
Yes.
Councilmember Goldberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Mayor Dooman?
Yes.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero. The second item this evening is a motion to nominate and appoint the following individuals to the respective boards and commissions, the Clean Community Commission, Pamela Kearns, and the Human Services Advisory Board, Athia Kayhan.
All right, Counsel, motion being ordered, try it again. Councilman Williams?
Full approval.
Councilman Goldberg?
Second.
A second from Councilman Goldberg, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members, prepare to vote, please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move to announcements and comments, and at this time, we'll ask Andy Franklin with Media and Community Relations Department if he has any announcements. And pop, pops out from behind the wall, bam, it's magic.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, Deputy City Manager. We're going to start tonight with a reminder of a railroad crossing closure on South Main Street at Hall Avenue. Suffolk Public Works Traffic Engineering advises that the railroad crossing is closed for maintenance and repair, which began on September 19th, and is expected to wrap up this Friday, September 23rd. That date, of course, is weather-dependent. Detour signage is in place to assist motorists traveling in the area. The Suffolk Police Department invites you to their open house on Saturday, September 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Suffolk Police Headquarters. This is a rare opportunity to receive an exclusive tour and to check out vehicles and equipment. It's also a chance to get to know the SPD family, ask questions, and talk with recruiters. Don't miss this opportunity to learn more about your Suffolk Police Department. Members of the Suffolk Police Department Special Investigation Section were recognized by the U.S. Attorney's Office for their hard work on two cases that saw multiple arrests for drugs, illegal firearms, prostitution, and gang activity. Their hard work resulted in the conviction of multiple individuals and the removal of several illegal firearms from the streets of Suffolk. The recognized officers include Task Force Officer Ryan Lindvill, Master Police Officer David White, Sergeant Jason Lyons, Officer Christie Gaines, Officer Nicholas Smith, and Officer William Price. Congratulations to these outstanding officers. The Suffolk Art Gallery presents I Have to Go: Landscapes and Dreamsapes by Jenny Bonner and Katie Morrell. The exhibition began on September 9th and will continue through October 14th at the Suffolk Art Gallery. The exhibit features landscapes and dreamsapes using acrylic paint, mixed media, and photography. The Suffolk Art Gallery is open Tuesday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. All exhibits at the Suffolk Art Gallery are free and open to the public. For more information, call 514-7284, or visit sufficva.us/sufficartgallery. The City of Suffolk is teaming up with the Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority for a downtown cleanup on Saturday, October 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Volunteers are still needed to remove trash, debris, and tires from the area. More information, call 514-7604. Our friends at Keep Suffolk Beautiful are hosting another cleanup on October 1st, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. Land and water-based volunteers are needed for the efforts that will focus on the downtown section of the river. Those wishing to clean from the water must provide their own canoe or kayak. For more information, again, you can call 514-7604. The Suffolk Public Works Department is hosting its first Public Works Citizens Academy. The academy is the perfect opportunity for citizens to learn firsthand about the inner workings of the operations of the Suffolk Public Works. Sessions will be broken down to provide an overview of the wide array of services the department provides to the city, from building multimillion-dollar infrastructure projects to emptying your trash can. Sessions include classroom instruction, as well as facility tours and hands-on equipment lessons. This free six-week academy will be held on Thursday evenings from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., starting October 13th, and will conclude on November 17th. Applications are available on the city's website. For questions or to request an application, call 514-7716. The Curtis R. Millteer Senior Recreation Center will host a community blood drive with the American Red Cross on Monday, October 3rd, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Donors will receive a $5 e-gift card when donating. For more information or to make an appointment to donate, call 1-800-RED-CROSS or sign up online at redcrossblood.org. Suffolk Parks and Recreation invites youth ages 13 to 18 to attend the free 2022 Young Adult Life Prep Workshop on Saturday, September 24th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the East Suffolk Recreation Center. Topics will include financial literacy, college and career goals, and interview tips. Lunch and door prizes will be provided. For more information, call 514-4515. Tap into your creativity while you learn to make beautiful handmade heat and pour soap at the Suffolk Center for Cultural Arts. This program for active senior adults will take place on Wednesday, October 5th and 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. For more information, call 514-7265. The Suffolk Commonwealth's Attorney's Office will host its very first Lunch and Learn for Adults on Wednesday, November 2nd, from noon until 1:30 p.m. at the Suffolk Health and Human Services Building. The presentation, which will be given by the Suffolk Commonwealth's Attorney, Narendra Plesz, will be, the topic will be identity theft and fraud. Call 514-4379 to register to be a part of this very first Lunch and Learn event. And finally, we leave you with all the ways citizens can reach out to the City of Suffolk through social media, the city website, and our main phone number at 514-4000. So don't let anyone tell you there's nothing going on in Suffolk. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. We'll now move on to announcements from City Council, Councilperson Butler-Barlow. Let me get you, always forget.
Thank you, Mayor.
Get a routine.
I know, it's been a long night. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to end on an upbeat note after a long evening, and I wanted to say, I appreciate everyone's comments and the participation and the turnout of citizens for this decision that we made tonight, just appreciate everyone's input. And connected to that, I attended Civic League meetings for both Curtin and Eclipse-Hobson and the Greater Oakland Chuck Tuck area in the past couple of weeks, and again, appreciate those folks, too. It's always good to kind of tap into what's going on in the community and hear what people have on their minds, and I appreciate those groups and the fact that they continue to get together to talk about their community issues. I wanted to announce that Healthy, excuse me, Healthy Suffolk had a rollout of a new community garden in the Chuck Tuck community today. If you're traveling through Chuck Tuck, it's two doors up from Oakland Christian Church, it's a very collaborative effort, many, many different community partners involved, and we had a nice launch today. If anybody's interested in adopting a bed at this garden, they can contact Healthy Suffolk, we're looking for folks to come out there and plant some of your own vegetables and enjoy a nice outdoor space. Looking forward to, we're having a kind of a soft rollout now, looking forward to a big, a big increase in the activity when we get to spring, but anyway, a nice event today, and glad to have that project going in our community. The last thing, we had a nice presentation on Peanut Fest in our work session, and I just want to remind everybody that we have Peanut Fest, because we have peanuts. It is harvest season, peanuts are being harvested even as we speak, and I love the fact that the chairman of this year's Peanut Fest pointed out that Peanut Fest is celebrating the rich agricultural history of the City of Suffolk, and I hope it's not just part of our history, I hope it's a part of our future as well. And I would like to, you know, hope that everybody will be able to attend Peanut Fest, it's a fun time, even though it's a busy season for the farmers in the area that are growing the peanuts, we try to make it out there, and I would just like to say that I know for a fact there's going to be excellent live music on Friday and Saturday, and if you like steel guitar, there'll be a steel guitar player, and he might be in the room tonight, so, anyway, shout out to the steel guitar player. With that, again, appreciate the conversation tonight, it's been a long night, it's been a difficult night, and we need to get on to the next day after this, and with that, I'll say good night, thanks.
Councilman Johnson?
And I'll be brief as well, but I just want to give all the citizens that participated in this process, and even to the ones that just talked about it at home, I hope this is a new start for our city as far as active participation by the people here. We need the input of our citizens, and it will make us as a council, I'm sure, as we go forward to a better job. I'm disappointed as well as that you are, when you have something set in your head and you know what's wrong, it's kind of hard to change it when you wrote it down, but the vote was what the vote was, and we are going to make this the best we can make it for our city, and please participate, and please talk to your council and let us know what you want. I have one sad note, Jeanne Jackson, our former city assessor, I didn't realize she had passed, but she passed away a couple of weeks ago.
What?
Jeanne Jackson, yes.
Wow.
Anyway, it's, we, it was in the paper, but she has very little family, and there'll be a service at some point in the future, so I would like to send my condolences to her family. Somerton Friends Quaker Church, in my borough, is having a 350-year celebration, one of the oldest churches in our city. I have information at my place of business, anybody needs it, but it's going to go forth on Saturday and Sunday of this weekend, so lots going on. Saturday night at the Holland Ball Field, they're having a 7:30 movie in the park, I think, I didn't hear Parks and Rec announce it, but it was on my calendar, so hope you will be there, if you want to be there. The Keeve City Ballet, of course, it's in town this week, I went to the opening event Monday night, it's unbelievable to watch our little teeny ballerinas giving sunflowers to these ballerinas from another country. It was really remarkable, and it made me proud to be from Suffolk. We do so many good things in this city, and there's so much to be proud of, and we have so much to look forward to, so I just ask our citizens to please persevere, and let's make sure we make this the best city in Tidewater. Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of brief things. Again, I'll restate, I want to say thank you to everyone that I received email, phone calls, had conversations with throughout the 460 process. I don't want people to think that particularly, I know that, I can't tell you how many emails, I know Mr. Dooman got a bunch, we pretty much got mirrored from everybody, but anyway, I thank everybody, and I want to hear from you, everybody does up here want to hear from you. You know, sometimes it doesn't work out, even though you don't think we're listening, we listen, but we have to make some decisions along the way also, so with that, I would like everybody to continue to communicate with us and engage. We appreciate that, and we hope that you will continue. Congratulations to Chief, to the police officers within the police department that were recognized, a fine job by all those. And for Jeanne Jackson's family, I send my condolences, my hearts and prayers go out to the family. My hearts and prayers go out to the family. I didn't know Jeanne was that sick, but anyway. I think I'm going to cut it short right there tonight and go home. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilman Williams, let me get you turned on here. Here we go.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to thank those citizens for coming out tonight and voicing your concerns. Again, just like everybody up here, you know, we value your opinion. Sometimes the votes may not reflect what you want, but we were put here to make those hard decisions. And I must say, since I've been on council, tonight was one of those decisions that I had to make was extremely hard for me. But I voted because I thought it was best for the city at large and that's why I stand behind my vote. And again, I'd like to thank those people who came out tonight and voiced your opinion. I would also like to extend my condolences to Jeanne Jackson's family. Heard about it last week that she had passed. My prayers and thoughts go out to her family. Mr. City Manager, if you would, and I can forward you Miss Hoffler's information, if we can just take a look at the problems that she's having at her residence would be greatly appreciated. And with that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to agree with what everyone has said up here. We appreciate the input that we've received over many, many months, the telephone calls, the emails, the personal approaches coming to my home and everywhere else. But decisions do have to be made and you have to take all the information in and do the best you can with decisions you have to make, what's best for the city in the long run. And I think we can work through the, through the issues and make sure that this project does well. And I also send my condolences to Jeanne Jackson and her family. I wish that her memory will always serve as a blessing to the family. And I'd like to thank the staff for your reports tonight. I thought they were very thorough and they really helped in clarifying some thoughts that I had and save some questions that I might have had because you answered what I was had on my mind. So I thank you all for that. With that, Mayor, I say good night.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, I'd like to give my condolences to Jeanne Jackson for being part of Suffolk family and give off condolences to her family. I attended a meet and greet last night with Old Dominion President, Dr. Brian Hipfield, who I passed the name, right, close, right? Okay. And over the time, like I've been in Hampton Roads and all, hundreds of meetings, I was very impressed with him. I mean, and entering to his house, I had no idea who he was. I just shook his hand and said, "Thank you," whatever. But when I found out he was the president and the way he seemed to be indulged in the, not only the whole city, the whole Hampton Roads, and he talked about the things Old Dominion wants to do and what they're going to do and how we can be a community, make sure, you know, he was just so pleasant and I was really impressed with him. And I was, I mean, I told almost everybody about that meeting, you know? Even one of my councilmen couldn't make it, but I even told him, he said, "I sure came, you're right." I think he's something special there in Old Dominion. So I really appreciate that invitation that he gave me. Now, I want to thank the people that came out, who in the last three to four months, that took us to this task and gave us all we could stand. This is one time that, as councilperson, this was one of the hardest ones. I'm going to say the hardest one because one thing about the other council people, that it affected all of us. I mean, it was, it affected all of us. We had a whole lot of conversation and even though you had your mind going one way, you asked your own, I had to ask yourself if that's the right way and I'm doing what's right. Because knowing how I am over the years, I listen to the citizen and most of y'all know that, but we all listen to the citizen. And a couple of things that was kind of, you know, a couple of things were disturbing, but I'm not here to discuss that, but they fought hard. And some of y'all said that they did, they did their homework. A lot of things they said, a lot of things that they did, and you had to go back and look at it. It was a hard decision. It was a decision that I asked myself several times, but I, you know, I had, I leaned in one way, but after you start talking to everybody, you try to be as pleasant as you can. And I had to thank Mat Hop because they did a great presentation. They was on the A-game. I mean, things that they showed and things they talked about, it was very education. I took a trip to the port and it was amazing to see how technology is. And so, you know, everybody fought hard. And one thing about this situation, I just think that, like you said, we got a job to do. And you hear me in the last so many months, it's about the future. And that's what it's about, future. And we going to be tested again because Suffolk is growing. It's not the old Suffolk no more, this is the new Suffolk. And people come here for a reason. And we managed well. I mean, we, you know, we go places and people talk about our city. You know, you want people to, you want to brag about it, then you think people are not coming with different ideas. So when they come with ideas, we got to be prepared or be ready. We just don't, you know, sometimes they look and say, "We just make decisions." No, we just don't make decisions. We just don't, we don't work like that. I heard one of the councilmen said to another person, said, "Suffolk is different." We have a very, not only diverse council, but we have a council that sit and put other things aside and what a decision we make is about the people. Now you look around, especially on this side, look at other councils, we are different. We are different. You know, like you said, to go against a couple of other council people, you know, it was, it was rough on me because I, you know, they had to do that. That's, that's what they are, that's what this council is about, about the people. But this one time that I felt the decision we had to make was the decision we made and that's what I feel. And just like the mayor, you know, you don't know how hard he worked. I mean, I'll go to dealership, maybe most of the people on council, but every time you turn it around, he had two or three phone calls. He showing me the pack of emails he getting. So when he took that long, I wasn't, I thought he wouldn't take that long. You know, I wanted to say something when I seconded, I wanted to say it then while the people was here, but I had seen one of my councilmen with this, Councilman Johnson, I knew, I allowed him to speak before I would say anything after I seconded. So I just didn't say anything after Mr. Dooman, Councilman Dooman, said what he had to say, I wanted to say in front of the people. Let them know that we just didn't take this vote lightly. One of the councils wouldn't tell nobody what he was doing. We discussed a lot of things. He, you know, make your, make your decision. This wasn't a decision, it wasn't easy, but I wanted people of Suffolk to know, we can get some more, some more hard ones. It's not the old Suffolk no more. And like I said, on this council, and y'all do say it, I think we get, we make the best decision for the people. As long as I'm up here, I'm going to try to make the best for the people. But some of them might not be what you want, but in the long run, I'm going to try to make, I think what's going to be best for the people. And this was a hard one, you know? It was a hard one. Some of my councils said, come back, and it was kind of prized of some of the things that were said early. That kind of affected me because I've been on their side before. And for you to come that way with it, that wasn't the right way to do it. But the fact is, we try to do what's right. And I, and I agree with a lot of things Councilman Johnson said. We got to get it right. If it's, if it's right, it's not right, we got to fix it, try to fix it. Certain things, you know, I listened to what he said. He, most time, I think he's real emotional and caring, but make a lot of sense. So that's why it was kind of hard for me to really go against him at this particular time. But I think that was the right decision for us right now. And I want to let you know that a lot of the things that Mr. Lewis came up with some figures, the mayor always was on top of that. He was to make sure that we can get the money we needed in order for make this project go. And I don't know if you recall back, he made it sure that we got to table this because we wanted to make sure that the people of Suffolk or the city of Suffolk wouldn't go in the hole behind this. Like I said, I got a lot of phone calls, more than normal, and I think all of them said, I respect them and I let them talk. And I like, I want to thank them again from the bottom of my heart for fighting a good fight. And I just wish other people would come out when they don't agree and have a decision to make in their community. We do listen and we just don't come out and just make decisions. One thing about it, like I said, I think this was one of the hardest one I had to make and it wasn't easy for none of us because we would say something about it. Some people made decisions they had to make. But like I said, it was kind of hard, but they put up a good fight. And I thank them very much for being indulged and caring about the city like most of us up here do care about it. With that, I say God bless.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, sir. I would just like to start out by saying my condolences to Mrs. Jeanne Jackson's family. She served here for quite a few years in the assessors' office and she just retired, I believe, in December of last year. She hadn't been retired that long, so she greatly would be missed. We feel sorry and condolences to her family. Also, congratulations to our police officers that did a great job that they are doing. Chief, I think they are, it is great that they are being honored with that. Also, the assessors' office, Mr. Butts, Mrs. Collins, Erica Collins, and Kevin Pines. Congratulations again to them on the International Association Assessors' Office recognition. I think that was great with you, making sure that they are getting the training in your office that they need to help move your office forward. So again, I say congratulations to you and to them. Also, I'd like to recognize Pastor Wade out here in the Odyssey's Macedonia AMI Church there. And they had a problem with the storm, that when the tornado came through, they had some problems. So they still not back in the church yet, but they are heading in that direction. So we keep you all in our prayer, Pastor. Also, to the people that came out tonight and have been out before, as I stated to you before, thank you all for your input and for coming out and your voice were heard. So that's all I can say. So you showed out, you showed up and you showed out, so I do appreciate that. There's a lot there in Bayberry Cove and the lot is in the neighborhood and the grass are taller than six feet. I'm six feet tall and it's taller than me. And it's not in a farm area, it is in a residential area between houses. And it might be an issue wherein that it's a budget item or whatever the case might be. But we need to look at that if it's a budget item because where I was, in the past, where I was told, if you have a lot that need to be cut, you send a notice to the person, then you cut it and add it to the taxes. This has not been done. I'm serious, that gracious, out of sight, out of mind. And you have nice homes on each side of it and it's a large, large piece of land, it's probably where you can put two or three houses in there. But it's wrong. And if it's a budget item, then the council need to know about it so we can adjust whatever need to be done because that is not right for a community. If it was in the farm area, that would be something different. But I would like a report back on that. It might be where the department might have a certain amount of money they can spend and then the money might not come back to them or whatever the case might be. But we cannot have this in a, in a neighborhood. So I'd appreciate that being taken care of and get back with me on that. We've had a lot to talk about in the last few council meetings. Maybe we're going to get a light agenda coming up sooner than later. And I don't know when that will be, but see, I think I had something else here. Well, I'll wait and I'll say mine to the next time. It's quarter to 10, 10 minutes to 10. Thanks again and I will say good night.
Turn you off there. All right, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. 10 minutes to 10, I will be brief. Just refer back to this evening, I too want to thank the citizens for their input. Believe me, I've used a lot of it in considering my decision. I know that I kind of went on in length in regards to my decision and it provided an explanation, but I believe that the citizens just deserve to know my thought process. They don't necessarily have to agree with it, but I need to let you know what it is and what I based my decision on, which like everybody else has kind of alluded to, wasn't an easy decision. I want to thank Councilman Johnson in particular for your comments. And you know, the fact that, you know, I've been married for 50 years and I don't agree with my wife all the time, but you know, we'll, we'll talk about it, we'll jump up down a little bit and, you know, we start over again the next day. And that's how everybody on this dial should be when we wake up in the morning. As they say, we'll be doing the people's work as soon as we get up and we'll be working together to come up with whatever conclusions. And I don't think we want a council that agrees with everything all the time. It's not how it works. I mean, it's just like any good board, you want diversity in your board, you want difference of opinions, you want to hear different viewpoints. And everyone up here is going pretty much to make the decisions that they feel are best, which may not, you know, agree with, with your own, which I'm kind of used to, but you know, I'm satisfied with the, with the, we talked about the process and once again, Councilman Johnson brought that up, you know, we're going to change the process. You know, we've got a retreat coming up after the first of the year and I think it's one of the things we need to discuss. So we know, because right now, as I mentioned earlier, the process is the same for the little mundane things as it is the great big ones. And I think we need to have a, something in place. I think we do now to some extent, you know, when we get an application, I mean, and then you can look at it and if you feel like it requires more information, then you'll have the latitude and, and the knowledge ahead of time rather than get, for the most part, I don't know much about anything until it hits the part, I don't know much about anything until it hits the planning commission, you know, and then we'll hear about it. So it's something to look at. The Jackson family, I did not know that Jeanne had passed away. It just blows me away that I, I don't, I don't know where I've been. I guess I've been under a rock or something, but I did not know that Jeanne had passed away. And I got to be quite good friends with Jeanne while she was the assessor. She helped a lot with the Humane Society. She was actually kind of, she was into horses, she was gifted in glasswork. She had donated some wine glasses on several occasions for Pals for the arts that she, that she had etched. So my condolences to the family. Quickly, the Plen, Plen Air Festival Awards, which is Plen, it's the artist awards at the Cultural Arts Center. And we seem to be saying Cultural Arts Center more lately. There's a lot of activity going on. I too was at the Keeve Ballet welcome reception and I'll be going there tomorrow. Taste of Suffolk on the 10th was, was great. I didn't stay out there as long as I normally do, but I did go out there and look like everybody was having a good time. The Hampton Roads Black Caucus also had an event that they, a regional event that they had at the Hilton Garden Inn. I want to thank them, I stopped by there, I want to thank them for picking Suffolk to spend their money. Shrimp Feast, October 7th, all you can drink, all you can eat, I think it's still 35 bucks, 40 bucks, 40 bucks cheap. I mean, 40 bucks, yeah. I mean, where do, where do you go get all the shrimp you can eat, all the beer you can drink, all the good stuff you can drink and have a band for 40 bucks? I mean, I stopped home, picked something up for my wife on the way home, got two things and it was like 34 bucks. So it's a great deal. And then from there, you're also into the Peanut Fest too, so, and it's on Friday night now instead of Thursday night. So stop by and visit, we'll have our normal, normal hospitality tent there. We also have tickets available at the dealership up until the last minute, but I wouldn't wait to the last minute because they only print a couple thousand of them now. And there's probably not a lot of them going to be left. Peanut Fest, Peanut Fest this year is going to be great. I think it's special with the 9/11 tribute. And I also want to congratulate the assessors' office for their accomplishments with their employees and also the police department for, once again, their officers being recognized for their outstanding service. And with that, I'll go to my quote of the night, which is from Antonio Villarosa, V-I-L-L-A-R-A-I-G-O-S-A. He was the 41st mayor of Los Angeles, in case that comes up on Jeopardy. Yeah, it's like an $800 question, Jeopardy, 41st. And that one is, and it's kind of appropriate tonight, and it says, "You've got to do what's right, or at least what you think is right." Because sometimes what you think is right may be not be right. But you've got to do what's right or what you think is right and you got to make tough decisions. And you've got to be willing to take on your friends when you disagree with them. But the difference is when it's over, we're still going to be friends. And that's how it should be. And with that, and the vice mayor has one comment that he would like to make?
Yes, I forgot to mention in my comments, last, last council meeting, I wanted to thank Sheriff E.C. Harris. He sponsored the Boys and Girls Club, book, school supplies for going back to school. And he gave book bags and they were stuffed with materials. And I did not mention that and I want to make sure, that I want them to know that we do appreciate the gifts to the Boys and Girls Club.
Okay. With that, I'll ask for, is there no other business? We'll ask for a motion for adjournment. Okay, Councilman Johnson? We got a motion for adjournment. And Councilman Williams? We got a second? Anybody like to discuss that? If not, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion's approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.